Welcome to the January 23rd, 2023 Wichita Public Education Board of Education meeting. This meeting is now called to order. The Wichita Public Schools will be a district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. At this moment, would you join with us in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Tonight, we have the privilege and the honor of having Hadley JROTC Cadets with us, Private Skylar Anderson, Private Juliet Slater, Staff Sergeant Trinity Slater, and Staff Sergeant Daisy Pearlman. At this time, would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mark time, march. Colors, hold, left, face. Present, colors. Sir, permission to post colors?
You may post the colors.
Thank you, sir. Order, colors. Ladies and gentlemen, please now join me in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge.
Present, arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Outwards, face. Forward, march.
You may be seated, and would you please give the Hadley Middle School JROTC a round of applause? Patrick, first item, please.
First item, under Reports, Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
You may have noticed, we've kind of added this to our agenda more regularly at this time. You guys are doing such a good job, we look forward to your new report. Take it away.
All right. Happy New Year, everyone. My name is Israel Torres, and I'm a junior at Northeast Magnet.
My name is Alexis, and I'm a senior at Northeast Magnet.
And I'm Andrew, I'm a senior at Southeast High School.
So before we get started, I hope you all know that this board is Board Appreciation Board. So let's give our board a big round of applause. Thank you for, thank you all for everything you have done for our district. We know this is stressful, as you often have to make tough decisions. It's hard for me to decide what to wear in the morning, so I can't imagine how hard it is to make decisions for the largest district in Kansas.
All right, well, thank you for once again allowing students to use their voices in the district. We're honored to be a part of USD 259 and to speak on behalf of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
So at our last Superstock meeting, we discussed what our ideal new superintendent would look like, and although obviously we are very sad to see Dr. Thompson go, we were really excited for the opportunity to be able to have a voice in picking our new superintendent, and I know that Dr. Thompson is super excited to live her best retirement life.
So our Superstaff group was asked about our district's greatest strengths, and we thought that our district is diverse, both ethically and economically. The district ensures equal opportunities for students of all backgrounds and perspectives. We appreciate how our district reaches out to students and teachers for their input, and they listen to their feedback. There are also a lot of academic opportunities with CTE courses, for example, the Jumpstart Program with W.C. Tech. And then there are also dual credit opportunities and work-based learning opportunities.
We were also asked what we felt that the positives of the Wichita community were that the candidates should be aware about, and we said that some of the positives were that it's a big city, but it still feels really connected, it's a supportive and welcoming community, there's all kinds of people that live here, different backgrounds, different cultures, and we feel like those diversities are really celebrated in Wichita. We also liked that Wichita's supportive of the arts, there's economic diversity, great food, a large variety of food, there's lots of entertainment, lots of things to do. Oh, we actually talked about Riverfest, you're welcome, Wendy, and also that we have a really good airport and no traffic. Oh, me too. We also were asked what we thought the most essential leadership qualities that our new superintendent should have, and some of the ones that were, had commonalities were that they should be open-minded and inclusive, so listen to different views, be aware that there's different perspectives, and consider those perspectives, and then make sure that their solutions work for as many people as they possibly can. Also, they should be flexible, so not come in super set in stone on all of their views, be willing to listen and adapt them to the needs of the people in the district, they should be able to problem solve, they should be willing to really get involved and be seen, so go to school events, football games, assemblies, Spirit Week, things like that. They should also be charismatic, so it should be clear that they really want this job, they're excited to have this job, they're excited to improve our district, also that they are personable, so students feel like they can relate to them, kind of feel like they know them on a personal level, and feel like if they see them like at a school event or something, they could go up and just chat or ask questions.
All right, so now I'm tasked with the really like dark part of the conversation, the more serious part of it, but we were asked, like, coming into a new superintendent role, we were asked what are the two or three most critical issues that the new superintendent will face in this position, and while our district has a lot of positives, there are also a lot of negatives as well, and we tried to narrow them down the best we could. So over our last listening session, we concluded that the biggest issues that our new superintendent will face include mental health and substance abuse among students, behavioral issues, most of which are a result to the COVID-19 pandemic, overcrowding in our schools as a result of growth in Wichita, especially the east and southeast side of town, and academic success. Among this, increasing graduation rates, closing the academic gap caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, increasing school pride, and finding viable solutions to a teacher shortage, as well as college readiness among students. And then we were also asked, is there any other information that you'd like to share concerning the community school or superintendent position that would impact the search process? So among this listening session, students overwhelmingly expressed the need for a well-rounded, passionate leader that is willing to take risks and make a change within our own community and our district. They also expressed concerns for more creative and unique ways to approach mental health within our district, whether that be for staff or for students. Students would like to see even more engagement with students, whether that be on social media or attending our events and sporting tournaments, and of course, being in such a diverse community, the next superintendent should always be open-minded and be willing to be inclusive of every member of our community regardless of racial background, economic background, or sexual orientation. And to end off, like many public servant roles, it can be quite stressful, and we know that, ensuring that you don't get political with the public and that you have to find a good balance with this. So we wish you the best, and welcome to USD 259. We were asked about what questions we wanted the board to ask candidates during the interview process, and we felt that they should ask them about their solutions to the district's current problems, and like how they would use social media to engage students, parents, and teachers, and also what weaknesses they think that the district possesses, and lastly, why they think they would be a good fit for our district.
Thank you guys once again for letting us speak to you. Happy Board Appreciation Month. I hope that this was helpful for you guys, and with that, do you guys have any questions for us?
It was helpful, and thank you very much.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, there we go. Hazel?
I just want to say that I had the opportunity to sit in on your listening session, and as articulate as these three students are, everyone in the room was very articulate and had, came up with many of the same suggestions that the adults did, and I was really proud of all of the students and the input that they gave that day. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, Hazel. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, Good News.
Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you very much. I'm Wendy Johnson, Division Director of Strategic Communications for the Wichita Public Schools, and I'm not sure I want to follow those three. They're extraordinary, and one of the consultants that was with us last week said they were by far the group that was on point, ready to go, and they were really fabulous representatives of our school district, so it's a blessing to get to work with them each month. So before I introduce our Good News item this evening, I want to pause and take an opportunity, on behalf of all my colleagues in the Wichita Public Schools, more than 47,000 students, and a grateful community, to say thank you to the seven of you for serving as members of the Wichita Board of Education. As the students mentioned a few moments ago, January is School Board Appreciation Month in the state of Kansas, and it is a time to pause and acknowledge what at times is probably a challenging volunteer job. After all, Wichita Board of Education members not only attend monthly meetings of this body, but for those of you who may not know, in our audience, board members spend countless hours preparing for the tremendous responsibility you hold in governing the state's largest school district. You also attend events, meet with stakeholders, respond to countless public inquiries, and much more in your quest to impact the future of our community. And you do it all for the whopping salary, which is $0 for those of you in the public who may not know, not because of that, but because of your belief that our students are the future in this community. We reached out to our high schools to invite each of them to capture a photo of the beauty of their school. Those photos, taken by students or staff members at each high school and framed, thanks to the Wichita Art Museum, are going to be presented to you this evening in honor of your service to our district and as a small token to say thank you for all that you do for all of us. So thankfully, each of you have a high school in your board district now. Made this task much easier, I would say, and several of you will be receiving two framed prints since you have more than one high school in your district. So Dr. Thompson will come to the podium by my side, and I will invite each of you up individually, so we can present you with your photo and a special certificate that we made to commemorate this, to say thank you, and so that you will always remember and reflect on the schools that you serve in our community. So, first things first, Ms. Diane Albert, who is our District 1 Representative.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Dr. Thompson. Your leadership has been invaluable to the district, and I just want to say thank you. I know many people are very grateful for your service, and so I'm grateful to have the privilege and honor to serve on this board with you and along with the other board members, and then along with a lot of great district leadership team and a lot of great staff members that I've just met along the way this last year, and so I just want to
Next, we have Ms. Ernestine Crable, District 3.
Being on the board is a wonderful opportunity, and yet it's very humbling. Our kids are the best, our teachers are the best, our administration is the best. I know it sounds like hyperbole, but I really am impressed, and I got more impressed the longer I was on the board. I'm so grateful to have this opportunity.
Next, we have our District 4 Representative and current president, at least for a few more moments until a later agenda item, Mr. Stan Reiser.
I love the keepers that our high schools that have them have created, it's really cool.
Next, we have Ms. Julie Hedrick, our Board Vice Chair and District 2 Representative.
I want to say thank you also for the opportunity to serve on the board. This is an amazing school district, and thank you to our current leader, Dr. Alicia Thompson. It has been a privilege and a joy to serve with you. And I also want to show my pictures and thank the Wichita museum for providing that.
Ms. Kathy Bond, we have a beautiful photo of your District 5 school, Northwest Grizzlies.
No, I'm joking. So for one on the board, that is not a lack for words, I am tonight. I am humbled, and I want to thank you very much.
Ms. Cheryl Logan, our at-large representative, our friends at Chester Lewis Academy wanted to say thank you to you with a beautiful photo of their building.
I love this district, and I have been around and with and served in this district for almost 50 years, and great things. We are one of the best-kept secrets of school districts in the nation. We're doing things that other people look at and say, how do you do that? And we are so proud of our staff, Dr. Thompson and her team, and all of our teachers and all of our administrators, because they do the yeoman's work to serve kids day after day after day. And just a little sidebar, this school, which is now Lewis Academy, is the middle school that my husband attended when it was Matheson Junior High.
And last but certainly not least, we have a beautiful photo of the Sacred Lady, which is the statue you all walked by when you came in off of 13th Street, for Ms. Hazel Stabler, our District 6 Representative.
The beauty about going last is I can say ditto, 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 ditto. I too would like to thank, and I'm very humbled to be here on this board, it's been a wonderful year, and I know we've done some really great things together as a board. I look forward to the next three years. I'm very sorry to see Dr. Thompson leave, and I'm grateful for the staff that she has, and I know that they will lead us through to the next, our next step, the next person that comes, and that we'll be strong and we'll continue on the path that we're, the strong path that we're on now, and I thank the community for their support and the staff and the board. I love you all. Thank you.
I also want to pass along my thank you, and if you happen to see Mr. Sean Chastain, he is the amazing creative genius that reached out to all of our high schools and challenged them to come up with something really amazing for each of you. So we appreciate you all and look forward to an important meeting tonight where you will definitely have the opportunity to take care of a lot of that important business that our community looks to you to address. So thank you all, and we will now move on to our Good News item. You can do whatever you want. You are the board after all, we take direction from you. Okay, so now for our Good News item tonight. It's my honor to invite Patty Stever forward. Tonight is an awesome opportunity to celebrate the outstanding contributions of our students and our schools to our community. Dr. Thompson has said many times that we are a part of Wichita, and Wichita is a part of the Wichita Public Schools. Nowhere is that supportive relationship more apparent than the amazing generosity of our WPS community and the goodness that they show to the United Methodist Open Door Turkey Drive every November, and the families that it supports, some of whom, perhaps many of whom are our students who show up to give and then receive as well. It's really an amazing sight to see, and the last couple of months of the year went so fast, I'm not sure we've had a chance to celebrate and share the totals and let you know who the schools are, who won. We have a little friendly competition that goes on every year. So without further ado, Ms. Patty is here to share more with you and introduce you to our friends.
Welcome, Patty.
Thank you, come on down. President Reiser, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. My name is Patty Stever, I'm the Student Leadership Coordinator for the district. I'm blessed that I get to do what I get to do every day. On a very, 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 very cold morning in November, did I say how cold it was? It was really cold that morning. We participated, Wichita Public Schools participated in our annual Turkey Drive to benefit United Methodist Open Door. We have been participating for 16 years, and I think without Wichita Public Schools, Open Door might not be able to help the community as much as they do. Our students and our staff from across the district, all the schools and all the non-attendance centers have the opportunity to participate, raise funds, go get turkeys, bring in site items to help United Methodist Open Door serve families during the holidays. We have a friendly, maybe not so friendly competition sometimes that goes on among all of our sites, to see who can bring in the most turkeys per student, and as well as who can present their turkeys and site items down at the water walk the morning of the Turkey Drive. So the names that you see of the schools on your sheet or up on the board here are the winners of this year's Turkey Drive competitions, and I know some of our schools are in attendance, so if you're one of those schools, if you could please stand up, if we could give them a round of applause. I just want to take a second to call out on Jefferson Elementary, because this just blew me away, and it's going to be some incentive for next year, I think, you might have some more competition next year. Jefferson, in addition, this year, it was kind of hard to find turkeys. I mean, it was really hard, and they were a lot more expensive than they have been. So Jefferson, in addition to the almost 5,000 site items they brought in, they brought down to the water walk 200 turkeys. And from what I understand, Letty, what's the dog's name? Did I say that right? Was also a part of that, bringing down some turkey, so anyway, thank you, and there's a little bit of competition maybe going on here, let's see what we can do next year. We will participate again next year, my friends with Open Door, we want to recognize them as our partner, because we are doing what we do with the Turkey Drive to benefit Open Door. So Diane and Nicole, I know have a few words they want to say.
Yeah, we shouldn't be thanked, we're thanking you. This could not happen without the students and the teachers and the administration and all, everything that it takes to get there. So a special thank you to Patty, especially during COVID. You know, it's not been an easy journey, and yes, indeed, the last couple of years has been very hard to find turkeys, and they're very expensive turkeys, and so problem solving and doing creative things outside the box, I don't know where you found 200 turkeys? You're not telling? Because I need to, but can we meet later? So yes, the school district brought us 391, and 200 came from one of those schools, but with, with the money that was raised, we were able to then purchase gift cards that were specific to turkeys and, or ham, people chose to do that. So we were able to meet the need, took a little bit more, took a little bit creativity, but, but we were able to meet the need, and as you see, we served over 2,300 families in those three days before Thanksgiving through a drive-through. I want to say a special thank you also to Dr. Thompson for your leadership, and you know, your willingness to even be out there, whatever it takes, to encourage us, the schools, to be a part of a larger community, not just with this Turkey Drive, but a lot of ways. I, I know that you have encouraged and shown the way for many students and many staff to be a part of the community in a larger way. So thank you for your leadership. And the one year that I missed, because I was very sick that morning, it was the coldest one, sorry I missed that. But thank you to all of you who put yourself out there and collected those and did all the things. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I said Diane, and it's Deanne, my fault. And Dr. Thompson, anytime you want to come back and wear your turkey suit, we're all over that. So does anybody have any questions for Open Door or anything?
Is that the requirement for the new superintendent?
Well, I pass it on to Michelle Inghenthron, that's who I was looking for, but she's not here, so, but that's who's going to wear it, it's Michelle.
Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
Welcome, Esau.
Good evening, President Reiser, Dr. Thompson, board members. With my readers, you guys are all blurry, so I'm just going to go in your general direction. So December was a sad news month from us, and so I know I didn't make everybody happy at the end of the board meeting, but I appreciate the comments and the conversations we had afterward, and I appreciate Ernestine, you coming to sit in in the behavior group, and Hazel and Diane, thank you for meeting with the security guards and hearing some of their concerns directly, we really appreciate everybody's engagement and doing that. So this is just a letter, all of you probably received it about an hour ago from, from a lady who was a teacher, and her husband was a paraprofessional, and I'm just going to read that real quick and, and let everybody know about some of the great things and how the school district does take care of its employees. So Dr. Thompson, President Reiser, and BOE members, my name is Jana Epple, and I was employed with USD 259 for 31 and a half years. I retired in 2015 from Woodman Elementary as a principal, and the reason for my letter is not about me, but rather this letter is about my husband and the benefits that were given to Ed. Ed found his dream job as a special education paraprofessional several years ago, and to say that he loved his job would be an understatement, he loved his job. The plan that Ed and I had was that Ed would continue to work for several more years so that I could retire and watch our first granddaughter. Long story short, Ed's health began to deteriorate, and he was not able to continue working, and that's the reason for this letter. I'm writing to say how awesome the benefits are for employees at USD 259, and you don't realize how much is provided until you're in that position in your life, and I want to express my appreciation not only to this board and the negotiating team, but also to Gina Weedeman and Nicole Heizelman. Those two dedicated employees helped Ed and I with our many questions and guided us as to what would happen next and what paperwork was required. Ed and I didn't realize that he would be eligible for all the benefits that he was eligible for from his employer. Now, Ed passed on February 26th of 2022, his poor heart wasn't strong enough to fight the good fight any longer, and he was forever grateful for his job and for all the wonderful people that he was fortunate enough to work with at USD 259. And I will forever be grateful for not only my job, but also the job that my husband held with the Wichita Public Schools. I promised Ed and myself that when I felt stronger, I would write a letter to express the sincere appreciation, and when I heard that Dr. Thompson had a the sincere appreciation and when I heard that Dr. Thompson had announced her retirement, I knew that it was time to get my letter written. Thank you seems inadequate, but that is all I can say. And thank you for having all of the benefits and insurance options to help employees when they find themselves in need. Ed and I certainly benefited from the excellent options that are provided by USD 259. With gratitude, Jana Epperaly. And I think sometimes when we get to talking about things, we forget about what a great place this is to work and how we do all work together to make sure that people are taken care of and we will continue to do so and we appreciate your engagement in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Esau. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome Katie.
President Reeser, Superintendent Dr. Thompson and Vice President Hedrick and board members, I just wanted to express our gratitude on the Behavior Work Group meeting that took place last Friday. It was such a productive meeting and I just want to thank you for extending those meetings so we can work together on how to best support our staff and our students every day with any of those challenges that come at us in our schools. So thank you for that. Tomorrow at 11:00 AM, we are going to exchange proposals for negotiations. So just wanted to say that we hope that if you get a chance, you can swing by the meetings and come by and see us, I guess. This is also School Board Appreciation Month, which you guys have seen and your dedication does not go unnoticed. As a parent and a teacher, I appreciate each and every one of you and just everything you do. And I just want to say thank you for always answering staff calls and concerns. The time you dedicate is very appreciated and so some teachers, they wrote you some notes, so these have your names on them and these are just blanks, so I'll leave those there, but thank you for everything you do and thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Katie. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Public Communications.
I do not see any people, persons signed up tonight for Public Communications, so Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Education, Superintendent Search, Stakeholder Research and Superintendent Profile.
Sean, I'll let you go ahead and introduce the topic.
All right, well, good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Alicia Thompson, who's now sitting behind me, so thank you for the support. My name is Sean Hudson-Beth, I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer. It's my privilege tonight to introduce to you our partner and colleague from Ray &amp; Associates, Ms. Kathy Schoenfelder. Kathy's from Cedar Rapids, Iowa and is part of the firm that has been assisting us throughout the process and her and her team have worked with us diligently as we have begun this exploration to try and find USD 259's next superintendent. So tonight I would like to have Kathy make her formal presentation and then we will, after that, open it up for dialogue and then look to have you all finalize and we will post hopefully tomorrow what is the profile for the next superintendent of Kansas's largest school district, Wichita Public Schools. To that end, Kathy?
Thank you.
Welcome Kathy.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. It's nice to see you all again. On behalf of David, who is not here tonight, he and I both want to thank you for welcoming us last week. We had a wonderful time. As you know, we were in the district Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday and we met with close to 500 people in stakeholder sessions, which is a great number of people. In addition to those in person, there was 400 people who also completed our online survey with regard to the questions that we asked in stakeholder groups. So those are phenomenal numbers. I've been in districts where I'm the only one in the room, so you should definitely be commended for the participation that you have received. So to that end, I'm going to start with the themes which you should have received. It indicates or sets out the groups that we met with and the common themes in response to the questions that those Super Sack students read earlier and boy, they were a great group, let me tell you. And so our themes pretty much overlap with theirs and so we just touched on the ones that rose to the top, otherwise the list would have been incredibly lengthy. So those are the themes, you can look at those at your leisure, however you want to do it and I'm sure you're in agreement and obviously there's some meshing of those as well. With regard to the data, I want to touch on just an explanation sheet and then if you have the spreadsheets in front of you as well, it'll kind of make more sense. So on the first page of the spreadsheet, which is the raw scores sheet, across the top, it identifies all the groups with regard to our 31 quality survey. So you'll see that there is a teacher group and there was 205 teachers that took the survey, 29 administrators, 140 support staff and so on and so forth. Overall, there were 724 survey responses, 10 of which were Spanish. It's not uncommon to have a low number of foreign language. I've set up 10 different languages for districts and they just gravitate toward English, but we put the option out there. So that being said, to kind of give you an idea of how to read our little chart, with regard to the scores, if you look at item number 31, which is Classroom Experience in a K-12 setting, if you go to the first column, which indicates teachers, you will see that 176 teachers selected that quality and in the teacher group, it ranked first. I am sure you're not surprised by that response. So I just kind of wanted to set that out there for you. And then on the flip side of that, if you look at Quality number seven, which in the seventh, let me, hold on, I got to forget, yep. Toward the top of the page, Quality number seven, if you go to the sixth columns, it says retirees. Two people chose the quality that reads Commitment to Visibility and Actively Engaged in a Broad Range of Community Groups. So therefore it ranked 31st. So that kind of gives you an idea of how we read this chart. Now, if you look under the teacher column, you'll see the raw scores, which I just addressed, and then the ranking. If you go to the second page, those ranking numbers, so for instance, the teacher, Quality number one, it's the number three, that then carries over to the ranking page. So each group is identified across the top like before and then the rankings up and down in each group for the qualities 1 through 31. So as an example, if you go down to the bottom again for Quality 31, you'll see that number one for the ranking. So what we do then is combine all those rankings and that forms the combined ranking column. We then take the combined ranking and compare it to the board column, which is also on there, to see what closely overlaps. So as an example, if you look at Quality 1, which says Was Willing to Listen to Input but is a Decision Maker, the combined ranking was one and the board ranking was two. So that's a definite recommend, it's very clear cut. The same way with Quality 2, which says Leadership Skills to Respond to Opportunities and Challenges of a Diverse Student Body, that ranked one in the combined ranking and also with the board. So we just take a look at that criteria and go down to those numbers to see which closely overlap and we typically, we recommend 10, but obviously you can have as many or as few as you'd like. And then we also set out some considers. So I did recommend Quality 31, which is the K-12 Classroom Experience, because the combined ranking was four and it ranked high in every group and obviously the board ranks it a little lower, which is not surprising. It all depends on your perspective and what group you identify with. So those recommended qualities were then put on a separate sheet to make it easier to read, which is the seeks a superintendent page and there's a heading at the top that says recommend and it lists those qualities. Those qualities are in no particular order, they are taken just strictly numerical from our survey numbers, from the quality numbers. So they're not in any order, they're not in order of priority, they're just put on there, taken from our sheet. So those recommended qualities are there and then the considers, if you are interested in those as well. And the following document is the profile that was put together by your district team. So now I'll let them speak to that.
So the last two pages that you have are the 2023 Superintendent Profile. At the beginning of that, you'll see the heading, Operating Environment of the District, which kind of gives some of the highlights of our district for anybody that is interested internally or in the possibility future externally to apply. The Direction of the Wichita Public Schools is the second heading, which highlights the Student-Ready Strategic Plan. So again, those four elements of the strategic plan are broken down in bullets. Moving to page two are the Upcoming Priorities. The upcoming priorities are the top items that came out of the Themes page that Kathy had just mentioned to you. And finally, the characteristics of the next superintendent contain 10 of the 31 qualities. It does not contain at the bottom of that page, the two additional items for consideration. Those came very, very close, they were right up there with some of the others and one of them, if you'll notice on the page, is kind of combined with another. So for tonight's discussion, we would be more than happy to include those if you think that they would be vital to part of the profile and we will then add those to the Superintendent Profile search. And then of additional importance was an item that you all made very well known and that is to seek a candidate with leadership experience in a large urban school district and will require the candidate to have a current district-level administrative license from Kansas or another state. So to that, I yield back to you all for any discussion and questions on this profile.
Sean, I usually do not advocate that you read everything, I mean, read the paper to us, but for the, I thought this was going to be up on the screen. So for the clarity for the public, could you read, because it's fairly brief, the 10 and the two considers on seeks a superintendent who? Or I could read it?
Nope, I have it right here. Happy to do that. So the 10 characteristics that were the top 10 plus two additional to consider is as follows. Number one, is willing to listen to input but is a decision maker. Number two, possess the leadership skills, knowledge and sensitivity required to respond to the opportunities and challenges presented by a diverse student body and community. Number three, has a strong moral compass and is rooted in justice and equality. Number four, is a strong communicator in speaking, listening and writing. Number five, has experience recruiting and maintaining exceptional staff for the district and schools. Number six, is able to delegate and oversee the work of staff, leading by example and appropriately maintaining accountability. Number seven, is strongly committed to a student-centered philosophy in all decisions. Number eight, possess the ability to enhance student performance, especially in identifying and closing or narrowing the gaps in student achievement and opportunity. Number nine, promotes a positive and professional environment that includes mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, administrators and the board. Finally, number 10, has classroom experience in a K-12 setting. The first alternate to consider is commit and experience working with all genders, races and socioeconomic groups while promoting positive and inclusive student behavior conducive to a healthy and safe learning environment. Alternate number two is to make recommendations and data-driven decisions.
Thank you, Sean, I appreciate that clarification. And for the public, once the board discusses and edits or changes or votes this in, those recommendations that Sean just read will be fed into the Superintendent Profile, which then gets posted tomorrow.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Julie?
First of all, I want to thank you all. I felt like this was an excellent process and there was just a lot of work that went into it, so many groups that you interacted with and I had the opportunity to attend several and they were just well done and great input. Again, thank you for your work and then I know, Sean, you and Wendy even worked on Sunday to get this information together for us, so just thank you to everyone involved. The one, I think the information is excellent, I think, you know, our community has done a great job putting their thoughts and information together. I do just want to make the one recommendation that I personally would like to add, the two considered items, so that we have 12 instead of 10.
Cheryl?
I echo what Julie said about thank you for your work. This is very concise and I too was able to attend many of those meetings and listened carefully because we value the input from our community, from our students, from our staff. And what I was very pleased to see as we looked at this is that we had the five different areas that every single group, including the board, said yes to. There were two other questions that only had one of the groups out of the eight groups. So there were seven groups that said yes to those two. And then one for two questions, there was one, two groups that didn't say for one, that's question 29. And then the combined ones, and my question is, you suggest on your paper that we consider combining number 20 and number 26 together.
I believe that's supposed to be 20 and 29.
Oh, 29, I'm sorry, thank you very much, it is 29. I need my reading glasses too.
26 is the second alternative, yes.
Right. And 26 is an alternative. So I'd like, and it makes sense to me to do those two combinations, so I do not mind adding the number 26, which is a consider, and then combine those two areas, those two questions together into one question. So that would give us 10.
12.
12.
So you'd have the total of 12. And I do want to go ahead before the next person speaks to let you know that I've been made aware that all these documents that you were looking at tonight for consideration, they are already posted to the district website. So if anybody in the audience or watching at home would like to look at them, they are now live and up.
Thank you, Sean. Diane?
As in regard to what we're putting on the list for recommendation and consider, first, I'd just like to thank everybody again. Kathy has been phenomenal to work with, Dave was great to work with. Attending, I attended almost all of the meetings, Tuesday and Wednesday and half of them on Thursday and was at other meetings when I wasn't there. So it was great to be able to see firsthand all of these comments from different community members, from various stakeholders and to see the strong themes that have emerged that is on the paper. As far as the recommend and the consider, my opinion is the 20 and 29 combined, that first bullet point under consider, those are already redundant for the number two, the number five, the number six and the number 28. So I feel we're just adding, adding more words to something that's already stated earlier on the page. The mixed recommendations and data-driven decisions, I do think would be wise to add to the sheet, but otherwise, I think it's just restating what's already in the top 10 pieces in a different way.
I echo the gratitude of the time and the commitment and the effort that has been made toward this process. This is an extremely critical and important thing that I think this board will do collectively in our tenure here. I was pleased, and I shared this earlier, that six of my selections, more than half, made it to the recommendation. And I was looking back over on some of the profile and again, what Diane said, it is redundant because it's already listed in the profile right now for the number one recommendation. Because we are a data-driven Board of Education, I would like to have the recommendation. Because we are a data-driven Board of Education, I would like to have the recommendation of the second one to consider to be placed in there on its own as its own separate statement or recommendation. But I'm very confident in reading this, that we are going to come very close, if not bullseye, to the person that will be coming into our district.
Thank you, Kathy. Cheryl?
I just raised my hand before Kathy talked, and I just want to second that recommendation of data-driven decisions because we are so pushing hard to be able to have data brought to us. So, I think that the next superintendent has to realize that's a priority of the Board.
Julie?
Does anybody else, there were no other hands raised. Does anybody else want to make any comments? If not, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Julie.
I would like to make a motion that we include the two consider items into the list of the 10, so that we have 12 items in our recommendations for characteristics of our new superintendent.
And would you mind adding that, and that we approve the, after we make those changes, that we make the, approve the 2023 superintendent profile?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Can I amend her motion?
Yes, let's see if there's a second first.
I second.
Moved in a second. Kathy?
I'd like to amend her motion to place the recommendation of data-driven decisions only into the recommended 10.
And I don't approve that amendment. I'd like to, I'd like to have both items.
Keep it as a consider?
Yes, I'd like, well, no, I, no, they're all, they would all be recommended.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
But all 12.
I gotcha.
I think both of the two are important to include.
Okay, I am, I'm sorry. I understand now. Any discussion?
Raise your hand.
Ernestine?
One of the reasons that I would like to keep the commitment and experience working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups in there is because that was one that was important to the students. I think it's also important to the other groups. But the fact that the students put that in, or voted that in, is an important one. Seems to me that it says, we're listening to you. We've heard you.
Thank you, Ernestine. Kathy?
Okay, I need clarification. If I want the recommendation for data-driven decisions placed in there, but I'm not happy with putting the other one in there, how do I vote? Because I cannot vote for both.
You vote no.
Okay.
On this motion, and then another motion.
I want to make sure I understand the question. So, you want to know if you are against, dead-set against that commitment and experience working issue to be involved, included in the recommend, that even though the other one about data-driven, then you would vote no? Okay, I just want to make-
Sadly, I guess. They can't be two different motions?
Well, I don't know. Once they're both include, if this passes and they're both included in the recommendation, then I'm not sure, well, we could see if you have a second motion.
We just have to vote no on the first question and then make a new motion.
Yeah.
If the first one doesn't pass, I mean, if it doesn't pass.
If it doesn't pass. If it does pass, it's approved and it's done.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cheryl?
Okay, and this is for the sake of our public. What we're talking about, may I read those three items? Because we, there's three items that are considered, to be considered. And one of them says promotes positive and inclusive student behavior conducive to a safe and healthy learning environment. The next one is makes recommendations and data-driven decisions. And the third one is commitment and experience working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups.
But I think my proposal was to include it as it is written on this sheet, which is different than what you just said.
Okay, well, then, we need to read what we're looking at. You're looking at the considers, which is commitment and experience working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups while promoting positive and inclusive student behavior conducive to a healthy and safe learning environment.
Correct.
That's 20 and 29 combined.
Combined.
And then, the other one is makes recommendations and data-driven decisions.
Yes.
And our discussion is, we seem to be in agreement that we want makes recommendations and data-driven decisions.
Correct.
The question is on the commitment and experience working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups while promoting positive and inclusive student behavior conducive to a healthy and safe learning environment.
Correct.
I think we ought to take both.
I agree that we should take both, and that's what my motion is. My motion is to take-
And that's what I seconded.
Yes.
And that was my understanding. Diane?
I guess I'm afraid of making this too wordy and putting in redundancy of things that we've already stated. So, basically, down here on the consider portion, we're wanting to make sure that somebody has experience working with different races and socioeconomic groups, but that's already stated in the above. And I think we're kind of splitting hairs a little bit, but we need to be focused on more of the upcoming priorities and the characteristics of the superintendent. And being redundant here is not going to have a positive outcome. So, that's why I recommended the data-driven decision be added because we're kind of putting a word salad together here with the same words, just in a different bullet point. And so, I don't agree with including the 20 and 29 combined. I think make it simple and include the data-driven decisions.
Thank you, Diane. Hazel?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend almost all of the listening sessions as well, and it's great to see this all written down and all in clear. I'd like to thank Kathy and your company, yours, for being so consistent in the meetings. And Shaun and Wendy as well for hosting. I was wondering if we could split that 20 and 29 because I see work, commitment, and experience working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups as being moral compass that is rooted in justice and equality in number five. That could be seen as the same thing. So, maybe if we took that part off, and maybe that would, it would split it and-
I don't want to change, amend my motion.
Ernestine? And then, Hazel, if you're not finished, I want to make sure I come right back to you, okay?
I see the first half of that, and I agree that it's kind of a wordy addition. But I see the first half of that actually being very, I think it could read, is strongly committed, I'm on, what is that? Is strongly committed to a student-centered philosophy in all decisions. I see that as being able to be easily put, and commitment and experience working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups. That that could be together and make it not as wordy. And then, this other one, that is promoting a positive and inclusive student behavior conducive to a healthy and safe learning environment. I think our point there was that we want to make sure that they understand that we're trying to make this a safe and healthy learning environment, that that's why that was the thing. But I could see that first half going along with strongly committed to a student-centered philosophy with the idea of working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups.
That may be, that may be a motion, if this first motion fails, that may be a motion I have to come back to you on. Hazel, I felt like I cut you off on there. Did you, because you'd asked a question, so I wanted to-
I'm fine.
Okay, all right.
Cheryl?
Yeah, I just want some clarification because I'm not sure where you're moving the first half of that to.
It was up there.
And it's not a motion right now?
I know, but what she was talking about-
It was up there, the fourth from the bottom.
It's number seven in the recommended.
Number seven. Thank you very much. Okay.
I-
I feel that's different. I mean, it's not so different that we're talking, you know, right field or left field, but it's just more clear in this statement down here.
I, and I agree, and I'm, I think Ernestine made a really good point about it being a very important point for the students. And so, I'm going to vote for that motion. And so, basically, we're removing the consider and making the two motion, the two lines as part as recommend if this motion passes.
I'm on-
And I didn't see, I didn't quite see the redundancy that you saw, Diane, so that's, and then with the Ernestine's argument and the student's argument about additional, that this was important to them, that's kind of what's swayed me to, I think I'll vote for this motion.
I'm just uncomfortable-
Oops, sorry, Diane.
I'm sorry.
No, no, my fault. Diane, will you put yourself back in?
No.
Yeah, I did. Go ahead, Ernestine, sorry.
I'm just uncomfortable with how wordy that one is. I think it sounds jargony. So, if there was some way that it could not be jargony and convoluted, I am in favor of the ideas. And I don't see them as redundant, but I do see it as awfully awkward.
Diane?
I'm looking at what the students ranked, and they, almost all of their other top three, and they had a number of three, a number of items that were tied for third place in their ranking, and almost all of them are already included. And so, I just go back to the wordiness of it and the redundancy of it. It's not that I'm not listening to students or anything, but we are trying to make this concise, and so, I stick with it's redundant. So, I will not support the motion, but I do look at the students' ranking, and like I said, almost everything else that they have selected in their top three is already currently on the list. And those do not rank very high amongst any of the other groups. So, because it's wordy, because it's redundant, I don't feel it's necessary to include, but I would support adding the data-driven decisions.
Thank you, Diane. We have a motion on the floor, and I just wanted to just finish by saying, not only was the student argument important to me, and so was, and I didn't agree that it was a redundant, I also wanted just to make sure the public knew that I sincerely support that statement of commitment and experience working with all genders, race, and socioeconomic groups while promoting positive and inclusive student behavior conducive to a healthy and safe learning environment, that I support that. I didn't want to leave the wrong impression there. With that, the motion's on the floor. Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl to remove the word "consider" and approve the 2023 Superintendent Profile.
Oh, we've got to go back to that.
Yeah. Now, we go on this one.
There we go.
I'm trying.
You did, no, you did. Okay, there we go. We got them all in. Motion carries four to three. Kathy, we appreciate your effort in this area, and we wish you best and safe travels back home.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll be in contact. This is a, the second part of the process. The first process was the listening and focus session. Now, to narrow down what those characteristics are and post it.
Correct.
And now, we're heading into our last stage, which is to actually get to an interview process.
Correct. And I want to thank you for all your time, and I cannot thank Shaun and Wendy and Wendy's team enough. They helped us so much, and this is typically the hardest part of the process, is getting all the groups put together, getting all the meetings figured out, getting all the time situated. So, without them, we couldn't have done what we did. So, thank you all very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Ernestine?
Well, I know that we just voted, but I still would like to have somebody wordsmith that so that it's not so awkward.
Cheryl?
I just wanted to echo the thank you to you and your team. And Stan kind of outlined briefly what the next process is, but can you, for our public, could you give us the next stages that we're going to be going through so that they understand where the Superintendent search is going to be, how it progresses?
Yep, I certainly can. So, this will be posted internally, for internal candidates tomorrow. They have to apply through our website. So, tonight, I will provide Shaun with the magic link, and I will put it on our website as open to internal candidates only. And that deadline is January 31st for internal candidates. Now, we know that sometimes people don't necessarily read all the words, and so, I anticipate that there might be some candidates externally that apply, so I will make sure that I keep in contact with them and tell them what the process is so they aren't left hanging out there. So, the internal application closes on January 31st. On February 1st, I will provide Shaun with links to all of those internal candidates, if any, that have applied. They will see their application cover letter, resume, and letters of recommendation. Internally, then, those candidates are looked at, and whatever your process is internally, if you find an internal candidate that rises to the top, they could be hired by the beginning of March, or it could be concluded by the beginning of March. There's different variables. If they find somebody internally, but perhaps they want to look externally as well, then we would then open it up externally, and then the two would be combined at the end. So, but for the time being, it'll be opened on our website tomorrow. Shaun will post whatever he posts internally tomorrow for internal candidates.
Thank you.
Okay? You're welcome.
We'll post it to the district sites, and then a ZL District message will go out when that is available.
All right.
Stan, if I may, I want to just thank many of the people sitting in the audience that were part of the stakeholder listening session groups.
Absolutely.
A lot of them are here tonight, and their input was very valuable, so thank you to all of you that came tonight and provided that input for us as well.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
And we're going to have a big presentation next, so I'm going to call for a 10-minute break. Patrick, we don't need a motion to take a 10-minute break, do we?
That is correct.
Okay, we'll just take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back here at 7:20. The Wichita Board of Education is returning from the 10-minute break. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Education, Every Student Future-Ready Strategic Plan, Schools Are Trusted as Safe Places.
Dr. Thompson, I'll let you introduce the topic.
All right. So, thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to share with you and continue the conversations around our strategic plan. And in particular, we're going to focus in on strategic plan number four, which is schools are trusted and safe places. There's been a lot of conversations around behaviors in many different forums, and so, we thought it would be a good idea to talk about some of the proactive ways that we're trying to work to impact safety and behavior and the mental health in our schools. And so, that is where we are this afternoon, and I want to turn it over to my colleagues, Mr. Shaun Husbith and Mr. Gil Alvarez. And there are many others, too, so they'll introduce themselves. We have a team of folks that are here to talk about the experts in the area, to be able to give the information. So, we'll introduce those folks as we go along.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, members of the Board. I'm Gil Alvarez, Deputy Superintendent, and with me this evening are my co-presenters- are my co-presenters. They will be over at the podium. With me, beside me is Sean Huthsbyth, Chief Human Resource Officer. Terry Moses will join us, Director of Safety and Environmental Services. Melissa Zimmerman, Director of Behavior. Holly Jaeger, Program Specialist in Student Support Services. Brandon Johnson, Executive Director of Secondary Schools. So they'll be joining us when their time is to come to the podium. But tonight, we will present on our district's safety, behavior, and mental health supports for students and staff. Each presenter represents a different department in our district, which shows the priority we place on these important issues. We all value the fact that the Board of Education has prioritized safe school environments, emphasizing this important, emphasizing this importance through the Every Student Future-Ready Strategic Plan. Student behavior is a complex topic, and it will surely take a collective responsibility from all of us. Every educational stakeholder, from the district level, school level, parents and families, and our Wichita community, will be needed to help reach our desired student behavior outcomes. Student behavior is not just a problem in Wichita. It is a problem across the country. It is not just a challenge in our schools, but across our community as well. Let's not forget how the pandemic disrupted our normal way of life. Let's not forget about the tremendous stress the pandemic placed on families and our children. Let's not forget how inflation increased gas and food prices, putting a strain on many in our community. And let's not forget that in October 2022 report, Kansas was ranked last in the nation when it comes to accessing mental health resources. Despite these obstacles, the district has continued to add resources to help our staff and students. Mental health, as you will see in our presentation this evening. Never before have our staff, students, and families had to endure so much in such a short time span. It will take all of us, staff, students, parents, community, faith leaders, neighbors, and other, to support our young people and get all of them on the path toward future success. We are working out of tough times, so instead of pointing blame or increasing the division within our educational system, let's unite in the one thing that can make a difference in the lives of our students for a better future: education. Tonight's presentation will focus on strategic plan goal number four, schools trusted as safe places, and will include information on behavior data, restorative practices, mental health supports, and more. We fully support the strategic plan adopted by this Board of Education and applaud the emphasis and investment that you have made to assure that schools are trusted as safe places. First and foremost, we recognize and acknowledge that the 2223 school year has presented challenging behaviors by some students. Our mission in the Wichita Public Schools is not to remove or kick students out of school. On the contrary, we are about ensuring success for all, all students, so that our students can achieve college, career, and life readiness through an innovative and rigorous learning experience. However, we also will not tolerate behaviors that will interrupt the learning environment and the safety of staff and students. When all of us together focus on rigorous instruction, insist on access and equity for all students, align our work to a common vision, and believe in our students' potential, student outcomes will improve both academically and behaviorally. We must do, do this together. Before we move into the initiatives in place to help support our students and staff, I'd like to start with some data. The data we will review provides context to the behaviors we're seeing in school and allows us to look at behaviors from different perspectives. So as we look at trend data from first semester only, so when you look at the data, you'll see some school years down at the bottom. These are for first semester only on each one of those school years. So to put in perspective, if you look at the 1920 school year, second semester was the year that the pandemic occurred. So we're just looking, each one of these years is just first semester. The quantity of student hearings that have occurred during the first semester has increased this year over last year's first semester data. So when we hear comments like "consequences are ineffective and outdated because they are not utilized in the right manner," or, quote, "administration will not take care of the behaviors," we are puzzled by these generalizations. As the data reflects, our staff is responding to disruptive behaviors. So if you, I'm just going to focus on the yellow line graph on the screen, which is the district data. So you can see that this year we're about 485, but in each level, there has been an increase specifically on student hearing data. While it is necessary in some instances, needing to remove students from schools for disciplinary reasons is not a desirable outcome for anyone. For that reason, we have many supports and initiatives in place to help support our students and staff, as well as to reduce the quantity of hearings that will be needed in the future. The next slide you'll see is unique incidences per day. Unique incidences mean if multiple students are involved, the incident would only count once. So for example, if three students were truant, the incident would count once as a unique incident, not three times because three students were involved. We don't tie it to each student and unique students. There was one unique incident for that day on truancy. Some of these incidents become the subject of the hearing data that you saw on the previous slide, but most do not. The types of incidents, incidents that are recorded can be minor infractions to more severe incidents. An elementary example could be a student pushing another student while walking to the cafeteria for lunch. A middle school example could be a student talking back to a teacher or, and/or walking out of class. A high school example could be two students in a verbal confrontation. So from minor infractions all the way to more severe incidences would be included in the data. The number of unique incidences per day, when taken into consideration by the number of schools in our district, we have about three unique incidences per day, per school. We, we are also slightly down on the number of unique incidences per day than prior pre-pandemic years, as you can see in the table on the screen. The next data table that we'd like to show you, students involved in multiple incidents. The final data slide I want to share illustrates the percentage of students who are involved in more than one incident per year. This is first semester data also. The previous slide illustrated the number of unique incidents. This data tells you that in the fall, 19.5% of our students were involved in more than one of those incidences. So if you think about it, two or more is what we're talking about, repeat offenders. Conversely, this suggests that more than 80% of our students are not involved in multiple incidents. In fact, most of that 80% is not involved in incidents at all. I want to be clear, this is not to say that we are not experiencing behavior issues or elevated behavior issues, but rather trying to put a context to the situation and assist in looking at behaviors from different perspectives. We acknowledge and understand that there is a need for behavioral and mental health supports in our district. This is why, based on, on your direction through the strategic plan, we responded with numerous supports, some of which are pictured on this slide and will be covered during this evening's presentation. I will turn it over now to Brandon Johnson, who will get us started on this first report listed around restorative practices.
Welcome, Brandon.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about restorative practices on behalf of my colleague, Michelle Inge Thorne, who couldn't be here tonight. First, just want to talk about how restorative practices is the 80% upfront of preventative behavioral issues. We brought restorative practices here to help heal relationships that might have been fractured or broken during the pandemic, talking about how we want to build a community which everybody feels safe and connected, so that if harm does happen, when we go to repair that harm, we have an established relationship and somewhere to start. It's hard to make a connection with someone when you don't have an established relationship. You don't instantly trust them. You don't know that they're out for your best interest. So that's why restorative practices is an answer or a solution. That's one of many that could help support our students and our teachers. So restorative practices seek to develop good relationships and restore a sense of community in an increasingly disconnected world. Simply put, to be restorative means to believe that decisions are best made and conflicts are best resolved by those most directly involved in them. We say that last quote from the book because this is not just a student initiative. This is a teacher initiative, a para initiative, a custodial initiative, an administrator initiative, a district-level initiative. All of us are working together to build community within our schools, our district, and our city, to make sure that we have meaningful connections in our environment. If you look up here, this is the continuum. You will see that 80% of what we talk about in restorative practices is proactive. We are trying to build meaningful relationships every single day in how we, how we interact with each other. We focus a lot on the responsive. So if something were to happen in a classroom setting or happen in a, you know, hallway or lunch environment, we do have responses for that, set up how we could have conversations to restore the harm, so that people who are directly involved can have constructive conversation to get to a solution where everybody's understood on what took place and how we can move forward. From the, if you look at the bottom, you'll see those different words at the bottom. We're talking about effective statements and effective questions. We can do those with each other every single day. That can be positive, that can be corrective, it can be intentional, and it can be reactive. It's all up to that. Small impromptu conversations, most educators, paras, security guards, all of the people in our schools are really good at this, having just small conversations with kids in the hallways, checking in them, "How were you? How was your weekend? How was the game? How did everything go at home this past weekend? Did you get food this morning? No, how about we get you to second breakfast?" All those kind of things. Those are small impromptu conversations, but being intentional about it, not just doing it by chance, but doing it by design. And then the last two are definitely more formal, having a sit-down circle. We've done this with faculties and staff. We've done this with administration. We've done this at the district level with different teams within the AMAC team. And then the formal conferences is something has really happened. Physical violence has occurred, a teacher has been assaulted either verbally or physically. We can have formal conferences set up so that the kid, the teacher, and anybody involved in that conversation can have a meaningful, constructive conversation to figure out, why did that take place? What can we do to better understand how we can prevent that from happening next time, and how do we resolve the harm from everybody involved so that we can move our learning forward? So what is restorative practices? It's talking about 80% being positive, but the big word here is belonging. It's a strong motivator and basic human need, just as food and shelter. So when we talk about community, community isn't just living in Wichita. Community isn't just going to East High or going to North High. Belonging is knowing that you are connected and you are welcomed in that environment. That's what we're trying to do with being proactive, making sure every single one of our kids and our adults feels welcomed and a part of the community in which they work, they go to school, and they're asked to come to every single day. Voice, this is when we talk about fair process. We've gone through this presentation with you all in the past. We sat down in a small group and had a great presentation. Voice is fair process. We want everybody to have fair process, to have a chance to at least give us feedback. You all demonstrated that today with the new superintendent search, giving everyone voice in what we look for and what we're talking about in our next superintendent. That's fair process. They don't get to make the decision. You ultimately get to make that decision, but you still got to hear people's voice. So they got to be heard. You get to understand where they're coming from. We want that same opportunity for our kids and everybody that work inside of our schools and the district level. And the last one's agency. If you know anything about the restorative practices processes, there's ownership in all of that. Agency is very important in restorative. You have to own what you do in either causing harm or being a part of harm. How do you own that moving forward? Do you forgive that person for what they did to you? Do you have to correct your own mistakes for the things that you did to cause harm? What is the agency within that so that each person understands what their ownership was in a situation? And then what is restorative practices? It's the whole notion of actively engaging students and allowing them to take greater responsibility, enhancing the quality of teaching and learning in general. We're seeing this in many of our classrooms already, where students are actually owning the things that they do in their classroom environment. We're not just talking about behaviors, but their academic ownership as well. This is not just behaviors. We have academic circles, academic check-ins, academic check-outs, and what agency do students have within that? And then participatory strategies have practical implications for young people to take responsibility outside of school. We are actually already in conversations with community organizations to bring them in, and along with Dr. Thompson's work, with Michelle Inge Thorne and myself, we're going to bring them in and introduce restorative practices to them so that they can understand what this is, and we're going to offer our services, because we're going to be trainer of trainers here in the district, to train them, so they can also help us as community partners with our young people in our community within the Wichita City organizations. And we've already said this, but we want to make sure we hit this a lot. The belief that decisions are best influenced by and conflicts are best resolved by those most directly involved. So many times in education, any of you have been in a classroom, a student does something incorrect, we go as admin, we take that kid out, we handle the conflict. Nothing was resolved by that teacher and that kid. We've stolen the conflict from that teacher and that student. So instead, we need to take time to support that teacher, support that situation, and repair that harm so they can have an established relationship after the fact. Building community, connecting us in relationships with students, teachers, staff, administration, and families, that goes exactly to what Mr. Alvarez was talking about earlier. We have so many situations going on outside of our learning environment that are putting stress, so we need to make sure we're building an environment where kids are welcomed, safe, and they feel trusted. And this is just processes. Everything we have within restorative practices is there to give us a process for when something does happen, we can intentionally respond, and we're not just doing it by chance. Every single adult who has restorative practices training and the resources can use those to repair any kind of harm that might happen. And we do want to separate accountability and consequences from restorative practices. We do not have anything to do with accountability or consequences within restorative practices. It's the 80% upfront, building relationships, and then the 20% after repairing those things after it's happened. Everything in between is decided by us as a district office and the building level. Consequences will still be there. Restorative practices is not about consequences. We get to dictate that. We get to enforce that. That is our decision. There is not an outside company doing that for us or telling us what we should be doing. We decide that. There will be accountability, consequences, and ownership for any kind of student behavior that happens within our school setting. Restorative practices training, this is kind of a review, which we gave you a few months back and even last year. This last fall, we had 24 elementary schools get trained. We had all 19 of our middle schools get trained. We are security officers, our future-ready advocates, district leadership, department leaders, and then the next year, we're going to have all of our high schools, and then we're going to get as many additional elementary schools trained as we can. Our goal is by the end of August of '24, every single building and every single department will be fully trained in the intro to restorative practices education. That is our goal. We wanted to give you guys these two quotes from our Supersac kids who were here earlier. It wasn't just those three, but it was the collective hole that gave us this. Supersac told us this is what they think about restorative practices. "We are disconnected from everyone. We're trying to reconnect as we go to school and need more human relationships." So they said that in response to us teaching and educating them about what restorative practices can be, and they said, "This is why we need it." The second one, "More group projects and activities to be intentional about creating more human connected, connections and communication in the classroom." That's what restorative practices is, human connectedness, communicating with each other the right way, and making sure that we belong in the classroom together.
And as our colleague is coming down, I'm going to tell a story about restorative practices. So we were at a school, and I was walking with the principal, and we were going outside. It was recess time. And I looked over, and I saw some kids in a circle, and I thought, oh, they're playing duck, duck, goose. Okay, I'm old, duck, duck, goose. Well, they were not playing duck, duck, goose. There was a little lady who was doing a restorative circle for her friends because they had had a little incident on the playground, and they gathered themselves, created a circle, and did a restorative circle. I thought that was the most telling thing, that how the students are taking these things and applying them, not just in their classrooms, but on the playgrounds, and I'm sure they're taking it home to parents and so on and so forth. So that's another example of giving strategies and tools for kids to have in their tool belts to be able to solve problems on their own without an adult. That's, that was pretty powerful for me.
I'm going to talk to you about the mental health intervention team that we have in our district. So that is also known as, we call it in our district COSP, or Kansas Opportunity Support Program. You know, we have to Wichitafy, you know, the name, so we gave it our own special name there. So, and this is a grant that we worked through, and I'll talk to you more about that in just a minute, but the objective of this program is to eliminate the barriers for students and families who need clinical therapy and access to services for their community with the community mental health centers. And so I'm going to tell you a little story before I go to the next slide about when we originally placed this program. It's been around for four years. We are on our fourth year of it, and we added some additional schools last year. And so we did put this into one of our elementary schools that didn't already have this program, and in the span of us putting this program into that program, into that elementary school, we were able to identify 30 we were able to identify thirty-one kids that needed additional mental health support within their school day. And I'll talk to you more about what that means. We had a different program in that did not have some of the components that this grant had in, and for years, we had that program in there. There were only two kids that were ever identified as having those services, but because of this grant and the employees that come along with this grant, we were able to identify thirty-one kids within this school building. So, pretty impressive stuff. So, like I said, currently, we are serving four hundred and ninety-six students within this program. The funding comes from a state grant known as the M-HIT grant and also from general fund. We do partner with our community mental health center, or CMHC might be what the term you hear, but that's Calm Care. So it's a partnership with Calm Care, Mental Health Association, and Kansas Children's Service League. They all help service some of our buildings, and it kind of depends on where, how we divide that up. So we do have different employees from theirs coming in to our buildings to help give these supports to our students and families. So again, I talked about the CMHC staff. That includes a case manager, an onsite therapy person or clinician, and then also med management that comes into the buildings and provides those services to our students as part of their school day. We also provide what we call Behavior Health School Liaisons. We also nickname them BHSLs. Our BHSLs, we have thirty of them within our district that are funded by the grant. They are the ones that are helping our schools. They're our employees, so they help our schools identify kids and families that would benefit from having these services as part of their school day. And they work directly with our teams to help those kids get the paperwork that's needed for the CMHC, get the appointment set up, and make sure that the student is what we call intaked. And intaked means that there's been a meeting, a wraparound service meeting, so that they can determine what services the student would qualify for. So rather than, before this grant, a parent would have to come to the school, pick up their kid, take them downtown, get them intaked, bring them back. So we're reducing attendance issues, we're reducing job issues for parents, and we're bringing those services to the school day so the student is able to get those supports right there. Families are also able to come in and get those supports if family therapy is needed. We haven't had as many families take advantage of that, but that happens during the summer more often. So, yeah. And so we do have to report out to the state twice a year our numbers, and the numbers that we report, of those four hundred and ninety-six kids that were served so far this year, sixty-nine percent of the students in this program have shown an improvement in attendance. Sixty-six of them have shown improvements in externalizing behaviors. So those are those acting-out behaviors like elopement or physical or verbal aggression, things like that. And then sixty-nine percent of participating students have improved in internalizing behaviors. And improved means have gotten better, so it's not as bad as it was, if that makes sense. Those internalizing behaviors would be some of those withdrawal tendencies, stuff like that. And then the other initiative I want to talk to you about is the Behavior Hotline. So we have a Behavior Hotline that is opened up to our staff, all WPS staff. It is open kind of on weird hours because we have current employees that are also doing several other jobs that are housing, that are manning these, this hotline. And so this hotline is to provide an opportunity to problem-solve and brainstorm solutions regarding student social, emotional, and behavioral needs. So any staff that works for our school district can call this number during the times when it's open, and it's open eleven-thirty to one on the last three Thursdays of each month because that's the only time we didn't have meetings. And they can call and ask for advice. And they're talking to our Tier Three Behavior Consultants. So these are the people that are going around the buildings and helping problem-solve individual students. So now they can also help with other things, if that makes sense. We also this year added a Behavior Email that goes along with the hotline. And so that email's open at any hour of the day, so anybody can email it. That works for USD two-five-nine. And so I want to bring you guys some data with this as well. So on average, we receive two calls during the hotline time, and notice it's not open very long, so that's actually pretty good data because it's not usually a quick call. And unfortunately, it doesn't have a voicemail, so, you know, it doesn't pick up if somebody's on the line. But we do receive two to three emails a week. And so those emails take a little longer to answer, and sometimes it makes us have connections with student issues or areas where there might be some additional support. We can go in physically to the buildings and help with that. Did that today, as a matter of fact, as part of my duties. Topics have ranged from wanting next steps for functional behavioral assessments or behavior intervention plans, student-teacher relationships, help with developing some strong transition procedures, to dealing with verbally and physically aggressive students. So far, I thought this was an interesting fact. So far this year, we have received more phone calls from general education staff than we have from special education staff. I just thought that was interesting, so I wanted to share. Okay, now I'm going to hand this over to Holly.
Good evening. I'm Holly Jaeger. I'm the Program Specialist for Psychological Services for USC two-five-nine. I'm excited to be here on behalf of Student Support Services and to discuss some of our different strategies and initiatives that we are doing. As you know, our Mental Health Matters website began last December, and you can see the website is up there. We're excited that you can get to the website from our district website. If you put in usd259.org/mentalhealth, it takes you right there. We're also on all of the quick links, the district quick link, as well as every school's quick link on their site. So we have connected to that. This was driven by stakeholder feedback. As you know, when this was presented last year, we had a lot of feedback from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year survey, and from that, this was launched. It brings together key information from all support areas of the district and that's ready for support staff and to support our students and staff. It is regularly updated with timely articles. If you were to get on today, you could see an article related to stress in the new year. Any stakeholders, students, parents, and community members, staff, all have access to this website. We do have a section of the website that is solely for staff, however. We do welcome feedback, so at any time, if you'd like to give us feedback, we're always trying to build this website better. And we've recently added some community links to community partnerships with things such as parent trainings and other activities. So we're linking up with, for instance, KCSL, Kansas Children's Service League, and other activities that are going on in the community from our website. Now we'll talk about numbers. The Mental Health Matters web traffic, this is always an interesting topic. Last year, we had about three thousand visits. It was, you know, brought up in December, so in that, those six months, we had about, or less than six months, three thousand visits. However, in November, we decided to open our Mental Health Matters website to all secondary students. Whenever they log into a device, if they log into their laptop, if they log into their, oh gosh, iPad, it opens up to our website, and that's been since November. And we currently have had almost one million visits to the site. So that really padded our numbers. But, however, it really, I mean, on a serious note, it means that our students are seeing those resources upfront. They then can go into, you know, another site and, you know, go search that way, but it's great to have a right, right there, right when you get there, from a student device. We are also able to see how many views we have and how long students are on or viewing our site. And we know that we've had some on there for a few minutes. So in a teenager's world, I have a senior currently in two-five-nine of one minute or one and a half minutes. That, that's some time on a site. So we also have a lot of resources there for students and staff, which I already mentioned. And now, on behalf of my colleagues, I want to bring your attention to our mental health supports that we have within our schools. We have counselors, social workers, and psychologists, as you know. They are key players in our mental health supports. I got current numbers just as of today. We have a hundred and forty-seven counselors in our district, one hundred and fourteen social workers, and I'm really excited about eighty-one school psychologists. We have, as of this year, ESER funding. We have increased to eight, we had eighteen point five counseling positions added due to ESER funding. We had eight social work positions and six psychologist positions. They provide consistent support within the building every day. They provide supports when students have counseling support on their IEPs, 504s. They help develop safety plans, behavior plans for students. They have consistent services also for Gen Ed students. And anytime, you know, a student is checking in, they're typically checking in with the support staff. Numbers, we currently have approximately one thousand three hundred students who receive regular support through their IEPs from either a counselor, social worker, or psychologist. And to date, from our check-in application, we have approximately forty-six thousand five hundred, actually more than that, documented mental health interactions with our support staff. All right, thank you.
Good evening. Terry Moses, Director of Safety and Environmental Services. Talked to you many times about safety and how we work it through USD two-five-nine. And every time I've talked to you, we always divide it to two areas, and that is people and bricks and mortar. And what you've heard is so, so impactful about people and all the things that we're doing on the people's side to build those connections. If you've gone to any school safety conference, they know that you cannot bricks and mortar your way into school safety. It is all about people and relationships and the services that we provide. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we do on the bricks and mortar side and also how we train folks. So one of the things that we've done with your money, just like we've done with the ESER money, is we've added additional folks. Good, great picture there of one of our new officers with some of his folks, but this is the number that we've increased, the number of security officers, from twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and now twenty-two, twenty-three. Just responding to the needs, recently, you had questions about southeast. We added staff to southeast. So this is just the numbers that shows what we're doing in regards to supporting you there. SEP TED is one of those fancy terms that is in the realm of policing, but it's crime prevention through environmental design, and it is so very important. It is the bricks and mortar side of safety, and that is realizing that we do have to do things in terms of bricks and mortar. We have to talk about surveillance. How are we able to watch kids? How do we reinforce? How do we do natural access control, target hardening in our buildings, those kind of things? We have two of our staff members that are certified in SEP TED specifically designed to work around school buildings, and they have gone out and completed SEP TED surveys on all of our buildings, along with local law enforcement. We partner with local law enforcement when we go out and do those checks. We're in the process of now starting our second wave of going through buildings because we started this almost four years ago, and we've worked way through all of our buildings, and now we're starting the second time through. Just some of the things that you have added through both grant funding and capital improvements. One of the things that have, certainly in terms of behavior, that we've seen great improvements with is cameras in regards to talking to students about what's going on. We've added new cameras in every year, twenty-one, twenty-two. I will tell you that currently, the supply chain camera issue is huge. We have funding for a different cam, additional cameras. We just aren't able to get them right now. And that's just, it's just one of those things. It's what we're dealing with right now. Video doorbells, as I've presented before, to enter any of our buildings, you either have to go past a person or you go through a video doorbell process, and we continue to add those. And card readers are the cards readers that you use to get in our doors, and we want to make it as easy as possible for our staff to get in our buildings because we do not want a situation where you have a door that's propped open simply because somebody can't get in. One of the newest things we've added in conjunction with our HR partners and our guest staff partners is we've added, or we're in the process of adding, guest staff access control. Because we couldn't give guest staff access to every building that they go to because it just doesn't work with the system, and too many people would have access to buildings, we will now have cards for guest staff in elementary schools so they can have a card to get in. If they're out at recess, they'll be able to get back in. And again, that was just listening, that voice that Mr. Johnson talked to you about. We met with our guest staff, and that was one of their concerns. So we're in the process of adding those currently. Our scanning system, you have approved that, and we were very, very happy to have that. This is the picture from West High. That was the first school that we established those. I know several of you have been at West High and observed those. Again, the supply chains kind of hurt us here, but we do have West High up, and then last week, we went to Northeast Magnet, and we're able to install them in Northeast Magnet. I was there this morning, day three. It was a weekend. Some of the kids kind of forgot, but we reminded them. And really, as expected, that first week is a little bit slow. We got everybody in the first, the front door in a timely manner. The bus door takes a little bit more time because they all show up. When they get off a bus, they're all together. And so we gotta, we gotta work with them to get them a little bit through, but we do have them in two schools right now. Online monitoring activity, this is one of those that we really feel has helped us tremendously. Working with our IT partners, we have a group of people that receive alerts whenever somebody gets on our student and they search certain words, school shooting, self-harm. One of the saddest ones is how do I kill myself without making it hurt? And every time I get that one, it just, it hits you right here in the heart. As soon as we get that kind of alert, we know that that identifies that there may be a substantial threat to the student, staff, or school safety. And we in turn then notify the schools or the parents, and many times, if it's after hours, we notify and work directly with the parents because we do monitor. We don't have somebody watching these twenty-four hours a day, but they do check periodically throughout the day, even over Christmas break. We were receiving these, and we had somebody who did parents follow-up over Christmas break several times. In terms of our numbers, this first semester only, if you want to click through those, Sean, I think they pop up. We've received forty thousand alerts just this first semester, and of those alerts, we had four hundred and twelve that required additional follow-up. So that's four hundred and twelve student situations that we've reached out and hopefully then been able to refer them to the services that you heard about from our colleagues. You saw these. One of the things that we got, when, again, that voice, one of the feedbacks we've received over the years is that people didn't know what to do in a crisis situation, so we used grant funding to put together these crisis response flipbooks. I can tell you, we've gotten really good feedback in regards to these, and people are happy to have them. We just remind them that people need to read them on a regular basis so they, they don't wait till that last minute to have to flip through them to see what's going on. Drills, one of the things that we hear about is what are our drills being conducted on? I know some of you received some feedback after something happens. They say, hey, I've never been, I've never been through a lockdown drill. We did a mandatory lockdown drill, so first semester, or this is August through December of twenty-two, which is first semester. You can see the most, the number one drill that was conducted was lockdown, and then the other two are mandated by state statute, the mandatory fire and tornado. But we do have other drills like evacuation, missing child, and this is just an example of some of the drills that our schools participate in. Training, again, we've got the bricks and mortar, but we've got to teach people. These are just some of the things that we teach people on. You know, you watch what happened to the National Football League. I can't be prouder of this organization that several years ago, we moved to put AEDs in every single one of our buildings. The day after that happens, who calls? But the media, and they contact us, and they say, do you have AEDs? Absolutely, we did, because we were proactive and we recognized the need for AEDs several years ago, so we have them. Just training like Stop the Bleed, training students in regards to handle situations should anything come up. So those are just some of the examples of the training that we provide. One of the things that we did was also, it was very fun for me because it's one of those opportunities that I have to interact with kids, but we do a lot of partnerships. This is one that we just held that was in October. We did it in a partnership with the Wichita Metro Crime Commission, and we had a teen drug summit. And we had middle schools who interacted with a variety of agencies, and they talked about making good choices. We had a parent and a daughter come in. The parent lost a child to a fentanyl use, and the sister was there. Very, very impactful. But it's one of those things we don't have the opportunity to do every day, but when we have the right partnerships, we're able to pull it together, and we had a teen drug summit. And we're doing another event here in February, which is Youth Engagement in Public Safety. It kind of goes along with our goal in regards to that career awareness, teaching kids about what opportunities there are in public safety, just ideas of things that we partner with. Youth Mental Health First Aid is another one of those things that we do to try to educate people, and basically, it's CPR for mental health. Just like if you had a heart attack, we teach you to do enough to get you to the next line. With Youth Mental Health, the first aid, it teaches you how to handle that crisis situation until you can get to somebody. until you can get to somebody into that next step where they've got professional help. And we provide a variety, we provide that training on a regular basis, and we have a couple of our trainers behind me as well. So looking into the future, we're going to continue along the same lines that we're going. We continue to improve our secured entries. We have a three-year plan for that. Interior door locks, we've talked about that in the past. We also have a plan for that. Matter of fact, I think you have the CM at Risk item on your consent agenda that's going to help us with a couple of those. And then, as always, that improved additional technology. How can we get out alerts faster? What can we use? What is out there currently, like the scanners that we recently purchased? I can tell you, we get calls, after we purchase those scanners, we've gotten calls from a variety of school districts and agencies that are looking at putting those in. In Trust Bank is one of them. They're adding them after we added ours. And of course, that, that training, that emphasis on crisis response, the stressing the importance of not propping open doors, those kind of things, and then routinely checking the operability of all your safety equipment. And I can't emphasize enough what you heard from the people prior to me. And it's not just the bricks and mortar that you see up here, but it's the relationship building that is a big part of school safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Terry. Our next up is our Future Ready Advocates. I wanted to touch on our amazing, excuse me, I'm going to touch on our amazing 11 Future Ready Advocates. And their purpose is to build strong relationships and provide mentoring with students who are struggling with academics, behaviors, and attendance. This includes social skill development, de-escalation strategies, coping with anger and academic concerns. The goal is to ensure success and/or improvement of the students being served in the areas of behavior, academics, and attendance, so that each student achieves success during school and also post-secondary success as well. So as you look at the data on the screen, currently, right now, 4,647 student contacts have been made this school year, and that's first semester as well. And also, there's 464 students on, in our Future Ready Advocate caseload. So just wanted to bring with you another way of our Future Ready Advocates having an adult advocate for students, so they don't feel like they are lost, or nobody's out there looking for them and caring for them as well. So the Future Ready Advocates do a phenomenal job to keep them on track for graduation, but also talking to them about how to adjust their behaviors in order to be successful in school as well, those coping mechanisms that they need.
So as the Chief of Human Resources, one of my jobs was to participate in this process by making sure we had adequate resources for our staff and all of our employees throughout the district. Last year, we chose Compsych as our new EAP provider. We chose them because they serve major school districts nationwide and came highly recommended after we went through a thorough vetting process. So they are designed with wellness and health things, dealing with mental health, and they have educators in mind. Looking back at our EAP usage for the year of 2022, we reported to you each quarter what our findings were, and you can see we finished the year with 609 people in the fourth quarter accessing services. The top service that was accessed was counseling services at 57%, family source guidance at 20%, and legal connect services at 15%. Those are things like estate planning, will planning, or perhaps somebody going through a divorce or a crisis where they need legal intervention. District health insurance, again, I can't reiterate enough what Mr. Esaw told you tonight about the benefits. We continue each year through the assistance of the board, and we're thankful that you allow us to bring the program that we have to our employees. The EAP is a free option for short-term issues, but options for longer periods of support exist and are embedded within all of the health plans that we offer to employees of this district. We are able to do that by minimizing co-pays to the regular co-pay amount of $30. It does not go up to the specialty co-pay cost of 50 just to access these services. We were also pleased to report to all of you and to our employees that through the multitude of messages that we sent out regarding enrollment this last year, Surest, one of our benefit providers and plan providers in 2023, now also offers unlimited free virtual mental health therapy for anybody in that program. And finally, this work comes together in our partnerships with several groups. So again, just so you have an idea of what the Memorandum of Understanding is for this Behavior Work Group that we are also vested in. It starts with the purpose to collaborate and review and study district-wide student behavior in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. It has members that are comprised of four people from the BOE side, United Teachers of Wichita, and the Service Employees International Union. We have meetings, such dates and times as the members may, in their exercise or discretion of authority, agree upon and want to come together. It was initially put together last year that we would not meet less, no less than twice per school year. As you heard earlier tonight, we just met this last Friday, which concluded the third meeting of the school year, and there is one meeting set every month going forward for the remainder of this 2223 school year. And finally, as Mr. Johnson so elaborated on, was restorative practices. All the groups have acknowledged the substantial and ongoing investment that the district has made in terms of restorative practice, and that was top of mind when we created this Behavior Work Group moving forward, because of the investment that this board has made in that program.
So in conclusion, our current safety, behavior, and mental health supports connect to our strategic plan goal number four, schools trusted as safe places. Our indicator of success is to increase skills and competencies for staff and students to experience academic, career, and personal success. We believe by putting these programs and initiatives in place will continue to help our staff succeed as we work to ensure success for all our Wichita students. As you saw throughout this presentation, there are many safety, behavior, and mental health resources and supports for students and staff. We will remain diligent in actively collaborating with district stakeholders on solutions that will improve student behavior, ultimately providing a more civil, productive learning environment for the safety of staff and students. As diligent and dedicated as our staff are, I can't emphasize enough that this, that it is imperative that our parents and our community also rise to the challenge. Schools cannot impact student behaviors and school safety alone. I'm going to repeat that. Schools cannot impact student behaviors and school safety alone. We all have a role to play, parents and community. We need you. We were told that our district was struggling to make a D minus out of an F. So I would like to publicly set the record straight. Our district's students, teachers, staff, and administration have never been close to failure. It is the relentless work of these professionals that make the Wichita Public Schools the premier district in the state. We will never give up on our students, and we will continue to collaborate and listen to our staff in order to find additional solutions around safety, student behavior, and mental health. Thank you. I know this was a long presentation, but we appreciate your patience.
Dr. Thompson.
And before we close, I want to do, give credit where credit is due. The board, we cannot provide these types of robust responses to mental health, safety, and behavior if it was not for you. I mean, you, when we bring these things to you, put on the agenda for you to purchase these items, or to increase, allowing us to get more counselors and to put more programs in place, and we only did the tip of the iceberg. There are other things that we did not add in here, because we could be here all night talking about all the things that we have in place. But again, it's all because of you all. And so I would like to give you a round of applause for the support that you've given. Now, I'm not going to, I'm just going to do, say what Gil said, doesn't mean that we don't have behavior problems, because we do. And the little, the 15% that's, that's still there, that's gnawing at us, they're rough, and they are a lot, we have a lot of work still to do to try to bring down that 15% of those behaviors that consume a lot of our day. But it is not because of the lack of effort from teachers, from district-level staff, from support services, from our security staff, custodians, lunch, everybody. We all have to take vested interest in trying to solve these issues. And then I'm not going to, I'm going to repeat again, we've got to have our families, our parents have got to step up and help us to be able to get kids to school and have expectations for them when you send them. Don't allow them to come to school and cuss out the teachers, or to hit people, or those kinds of things. Talk to them about what we need them to be able to do, and that's to come to school. We're going to love on them and hug them and give them all that we have, but we have to have partnerships with our families in order to be able to do that. And I'm also going to reach out to our community, I mean, I'm talking about our county and our city and our state officials. We should not be the last state on the registry for mental health services in our communities. We have got to step up and advocate to provide resources so that we can stabilize our community, which in return will stabilize our kids and the families unit, and then they can come to school and be able to get a productive education. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to our president.
Kathy.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I think that you echo everything that everyone in this room is feeling. Wonderful presentation, thank you. I do have some questions. Brandon, how many counselors does each school building have? And does every, or maybe Holly, or does every school have a counselor on site right now?
Yes, I don't have exact numbers. I mean, I have the exact total number, but it depends upon high school, middle school, or elementary. Our high schools can have anywhere from five to six counselors, one school psychologist, two social workers, that's an example. Every school does have a representative, representative school psychologist, counselor, or social worker working with them. Does that answer your question?
So they're not traveling to other schools, they're there for the day?
There may be.
Okay, no, that's okay.
There may be, there are some that are split between two, but every building has, has those resources.
In a perfect world, we would have one per school from eight to four.
In a perfect world, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
That was, that was good. I have a few more questions. I don't know who they're going to be addressed to.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The M-H-I-T-K-O-S-P. How's that? Yes, okay. How much time away from the students' academic learning is used up to receive these services?
That is a great question, and it's really an individualized answer. I mean, it depends on the services that the student qualifies for. So if they qualify for therapy, therapy is typically 30 to 45 minutes long. If they qualify for case management, most times the case manager is actually going into the classroom with the student and participating alongside the student in the classes, but not always. It's really individualized. So that's hard to answer.
So if they're taken out of an academic class for these, I'm concerned that they're missing out on their education.
That is a great concern. I'm glad you pointed that out. That's why we have Behavior Health School liaisons, our employees, that help kind of navigate that scheduling piece, so that they can be sure that whatever piece that that student's being taken out of, it's not going to be detrimental to their academics.
And I just want to make sure that we do not lose sight that we are an educational institution and not a mental health institution.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy.
I have a few more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know me.
No, no. I heard you say thank you, and then I.
Well, I was thanking her.
Yeah, I got you.
Under counselor and psych support. Thank you, Holly. Yeah, you might as well just stay down there. And under the ESSR funds that are supporting the counselors and the social workers and the psychologists, will these positions be able to be sustained when the ESSR funds go away? And if not, what are we going to do?
And that is a great question. I think we need to take that back to my supervisors, because yes, we would love to, we will be working on that diligently.
Because we only have about a year and a half.
Exactly.
And then it's gone. Okay. And I think I have just one more, and this is for Terry. I just wanted to see you guys get up. Not really. Oh, the teen, the teen drug summit.
Yes, ma'am.
There's another one coming up in February. Could you give information?
It's not a teen drug summit, it's something similar.
Yes.
It's, we're calling it Youth Engagement and Public Safety. In the past, we've done law court, and we wanted to just kind of change it up a little bit. So we're again partnering with Wichita Metro Crime Commission, and we're inviting high school students in this case. The teen drug summit was, was middle school students, but we're inviting high school students to come and learn about positions like in DCF, something that's still public safety related. We've got juvenile probation and parole coming, as well as law enforcement. Again, going with a different goal rather than public safety, it's more that career goal, but trying to educate kids that there are other opportunities in public safety, and an opportunity to get them to interact with people in DCF law enforcement, a variety of places, or a variety of different careers.
Can board members attend?
Absolutely.
And can we have information of when, where?
February 9th. Beggs Ballroom at Wichita State University, all day.
Beggs Ballroom?
Yeah, mhm. Yes, ma'am. In the Radigan Center.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Just one more, Mr. President, and then I am done.
No rush.
Okay, on Memorandum of Understanding. Who on the Board of Education sits on this behavior group?
That would be myself, that would also be Brandon Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Michelle Ingenthron, and then one of our behavior specialists, Chrissy Mate.
Okay, this says Board of Education. This says that there are members on the Board of Education, and I'm assuming that's the seven of us.
We are the representatives of the Board of Education.
Okay, we might want to say representatives of BOE, because I thought it was one of us. So I got confused. Okay, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much.
It, it does say from four representatives from each of the following groups. She's right, what she said. No more than, oh, no more than four reps. I got it, okay, got it.
Yeah, and what she's saying is, is it shouldn't say, I don't want to speak for you, but it shouldn't say BOE, because it's not the Board of Education that the four representatives are coming, maybe USD 259 Administration or something, I, you know.
So what we would do is in upcoming negotiations, we would just ask for a recommended language change in the MOU from a moving forward basis.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Ernstine.
Well, let's just, Terry, it's just a simple question. You said that it's new at North, the weapon detectors.
Yes, ma'am.
Are new at Northeast Magnet, and they all came in a bunch. I, I was at the West High inauguration of, of our.
Scanners.
Scanners. How's that working out at West High now? Have they, have the students figured out to go through that one at a time, and any problems?
Yes, pretty much as predicted. We had done our research with other places, and they said it takes a week to two weeks for people to get comfortable with them. And again, I was at Northeast Magnet this morning, and that's day three, and there was, they were on the struggle bus. But as with West High, we've, we know it's going to take just a little bit for people to get comfortable with them.
So West High's going well?
They know they need to take their computers out of their backpack, but when they wait till the very last minute to get there, it just slows the process. And so we've got to get them to where they're used to it before they get all the way up there and speed it up a little bit.
But West High's going pretty smoothly now?
Yes, ma'am, it is, yes, it is.
That's exciting.
I think so too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernstine. Julie?
Yeah, what my question is, is it kind of piggybacks off Kathy's comments, because she was recommending this change to the MOU, and then you made a comment about negotiations. Can you just explain to all of us how this MOU came into being? Just how that all works relative to who created it, how it relates to negotiations, just kind of the background of where this comes from and what it is?
Yeah, happy to do that. So last year, during negotiations between the school board, the representatives of the school board, and United Teachers of Wichita, one of the topics that came up was the subject of the student behaviors. So what our chief negotiator and their negotiator was able to work out, and we agreed to, is that both sides would come up with, or we would form an MOU to create this ad hoc committee to help study student behaviors. We knew it was in the very early stages, but we saw this forthcoming, coming out of the COVID pandemic, and we were seeing a rise in those numbers. With the implementation of the restorative practices, we felt like it would be good to collectively get folks from our labor partners and those of us that were selected to be able to represent the Board of Education at this. and those of us that were selected to be able to represent the Board of Education at this group to be able to look at the behaviors, study them, bring in some other district experts such as Ms. Mate, the folks that are represented at the secondary and elementary levels, and including getting some sped input so we could move forward and identify these issues, and knew that they were gonna have some long-term impacts. But again, wanna make sure that we are deeply grounded in this, that we have a vested interest in it, all of us do, because as we've reiterated tonight, we don't want our staff to get hurt. We wanna love on those kids, like Dr. Thompson said, but we've gotta have the support from the parents, the community, and then these are coming up with solutions. We're talking workable solutions to be able to move forward and how we're gonna combat this issue, because Wichita's not the only one suffering from it. There's multiple articles even out today talking about how boards are having to address student behavior issues. So we look forward to the upcoming negotiations, to continuing this work, and we will continue to report back as often as possible.
Diane?
Thank you. I, I just wanna say that I'm, I'm glad to hear that the Behavior Work Group has scheduled meetings every month for the rest of the school year. I think that falls in line with the intention behind why that was negotiated last year. And I do hope that the board gets regular updates on the findings and information from that, because we are dealing with problems, and I wanna hear from the teachers and the staff that are dealing with that on a day-to-day basis. I wanna hear from them for solutions as to what to do and how to solve these problems. So a number of things, and I'll probably forget some along the way, but a question on the behavior hotline. It says that we get emails and phone calls. Is this data collected? Is this kind of part of, gonna be looped in with like the Behavior Work Group with kind of back-and-forth feedback or solutions?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that answer, so we will find out and get back unless somebody else here knows about that answer.
Just, are we collecting information from that, like solutions to these problems? Somebody's calling in because they've identified a problem.
So yes, they do keep track of the calls.
Okay.
Yes, so she's nodding yes.
Yes, we collect the data for that, and if it's asked for, we certainly will share that.
And then I did just wanna point out, because Teri Moses, you, you've done a great job of going through the buildings, and I think this was not highlighted enough, that you're on your second round of going through all the buildings to identify security issues and weak spots. And so I just wanted to bring attention that, that this, all the schools have already been gone through, and now we're doing it again.
Yes, so, and just to point out, when you have things like Uvalde happen, that your focus all of a sudden's become very sharp on prop doors. Whereas when we went through them three years ago, maybe that, well, certainly that wasn't our area of focus. And so what we look at is what's happening nationwide, as well as locally, is feedback that we get, and we're constantly adding things, and even through the training, the crime prevention through environmental design, we're adding things to our checklist to make sure that we are putting a focus on the areas where weaknesses are being seen, not just in our district, but nationwide.
Yeah, thank you for that attention to detail. I appreciate that. So the Future Ready Advocate student contact data, what consists of a contact?
It could be anything from just a check-in, 'cause they'll check in with students that, knowing that they have, may have some academic needs or social needs or behavior needs, but it could be a check-in, it could be, I'm trying to remember the.
I could give some examples. So the Future Ready Advocates in the mornings, when I've gone into buildings, you'll see them standing around a meeting with young folks, and they call it triaging. So they kind of meet them in the morning to see how their day, their night was, before they enter into a classroom, to make sure it's all good. There are some students that struggle in specific classrooms, maybe, for instance, math or language arts. So what you'll see is you'll see a Future Ready Advocate go in to some of those courses or classes during that time when the student typically begins to kind of unravel a little bit, and then have that time, and they know when those times are, 'cause they've collected their data to know when that is, and then they go in and support those students. The other thing that the Future Ready Advocates do is they meet with young men over, during the lunchtime, during advocacy time. You'll see Future Ready Advocates meeting with small groups of young men, and you'll hear them talking about all sorts of topics that they come up with to help them to be able to de, de, I heard them talking about fighting, pulling their pants up, just all those kinds of topics that you would want them to be having, they're having with the young men. And what is really cool about that is, is they celebrate also with those young men. So when they, when they meet goals and accomplish tasks of staying on the good, on the blue side, then they are also celebrating with kids. So it's just a number of things, but those are a couple of examples of what you would see a Future Ready Advocate do.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I do think as the board that we, we've already got policies in place that address student behavior, but I do think that potentially the, the board needs to look and, look at those policies and probably tighten those up a little bit. Because, for example, we've got policy fourteen sixty-four, and in that it states all students are held responsible for their personal actions, and the right to attend the Wichita Public Schools carries with it the obligation to maintain acceptable behavior. And I think just even from the media, from talking with teachers, from talking with other staff members, that that is not being done with a number of our students. Yes, most of them are behaving properly, behaving respectfully, but we do have a significant number of students that are not behaving in that way, and I would like the board to look into adding more language to some of these policies and then probably adding more consequences, whether looking into, whether that be a financial fine, whether that be a alternative school placement. I don't have the answer to that, but I do think that that's something that we need to look into to start helping resolve some of these issues, because what we saw tonight on the presentation is this is all well and good. This, they're actually great programs. It, you do kind of get a warm and fuzzy feeling from some of it, but that's not addressing some of the behaviors that I've been privy to hearing about here in the last week and the last few months. And so I think we need to put some teeth into our policies and start tightening up our consequences within our buildings, because we've got teachers that are, are kind of at the end of their rope with the student behavior issue. So as a board, I think that's something that we need to look into rather quickly.
Thank you, Diane. Cheryl?
Thank you for this report. You know, we've all heard about all of these programs, but it's really kind of overwhelming when you put them all in one package. So we are doing lots. We still are continuing to look for new things that we can do, and we re, we are looking not to our families and our communities to help us with this. What I was a bit surprised by, and, and actually encouraged by, was the data that you presented early on that showed the unique incidents per day and how, yes, we're having a problem this year, but it's not like we're three hundred percent over where we've been in other years. We're kind of right in line with where we've been every year, except last year was lower. But if you look at the two years before that, they were actually higher than where we are now. And I don't mean that as an excuse and that we stop doing everything we can, but I think we also wanna begin to say, we have a unique group of students that are creating a lot of our problems, and we've gotta start dealing with those students, and we are. And we see that by the suspensions and so on that we're doing with students. So I, I think this is a topic that we wanna continue always to look at, because there are things that we can do that we're not doing now. But I also think we don't wanna act like the sky is falling and we're not doing anything, because obviously we are. So thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, Cheryl. Hazel?
Yes, I'd also like to say that I'm glad that the behavior groups will be meeting every month. I think that will be very beneficial. I have a question about the unique incidents that we have per day. What is the follow-up to an incident report? And what is a time period when there is an incident? Time period from when there's an incident to a report?
I would say it would probably depend on the incident itself. I mean, if a teacher submits a incident referral on synergy or for some minor infraction, that, that could be twenty-four hours. If something's more severe, there may be a call on the radio saying, "We need immediate help," if that's happened. So that would probably be more immediate in nature. But when, when you say follow-up, 'cause the, the process would go, you enter it, you talk to the student, you, you provide a consequence, and then it's written up in the disposition on synergy, and I, I can't quite remember if there's an automatic email that goes back to the teacher or if that's gonna be the responsibility of the administration to say, "This is what happened to, what, with the student." But the student will be returning, whether it's a detention, whether it's an in-school suspension, whether it's a out-of-school suspension, or just even a conference with the student and the family.
So I'm, I'm wondering if there is contact, like if there is an incident with a teacher and a student, is there a follow-up from administration with the teacher to make sure that the problem is eliminated? And also, I'm wondering about the consistency in the way that the result, the behavior is, problems are addressed. Across the district.
Each school will determine their discipline plan or behavior plan within their, their schools. I think there is some understanding of specific incidences that may occur that would warrant a specific, I mean, when, any major severe severity could be an automatic out-of-school suspension or even go to a hearing if it was severe. If it was walking out of class, that could be anywhere from a restorative conversation, small impromptu conference with a student. It could be a detention. They, they may look at if it's repetitive, if the student has done the same type of behavior multiple times, or is this just a one-off to get out of bad day? So there's, there's some complexity within how you determine what it is, and that's why you, each school has the opportunity to make, to.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I mean in consistency, so if a teach, so we know, I know that students are transferred from school to school when they have problems. They go to, they're transferred to another school. And what may be a slap on the hand at one school might have a suspension at another school. And I'm just wondering if there is a way that we could be more consistent with, like, is there a written plan of, of action when there are different types of infractions?
There can be. Some schools probably do have a specific plan that they follow to start with, but I'm, I'm gonna say that there's a difference in levels of, it, it's hard to say that there's one specific thing you do for this particular item. So if you're putting hands on somebody, is that a, a true fight? Or is that a pushing match between friends, and are you gonna give them both the same consequence? The, the level of, of the, that's why they have to take each individual situation and really look at it to determine, is it worth the five-day suspension, or is it worth a three-day suspension for a verbal confrontation? Or, and add a restorative practice so they can talk to each other if they're willing to, 'cause they have, they have, both have to voluntarily do it. Can they talk it out so they don't get into a fight or get into a, a, a possible situation later on in the school? So it, that's why the complexity of behaviors is, is hard. I know what we wanna say. We wanna say first offense, it's three-day suspension, second offense, five-day suspension, third offense, you're going to an expulsion hearing. There's just situations that you, you can't, you can't do that just because of the differences in the continuum of what's happening. But do they have, do they have to have somewhere to start? Yes, I, I do believe that there's some behavior plans that schools have, and, and some consistency amongst schools as well that would determine that. It's just when you get into these minor ones, some may say, a conference with student, and I talked to the parent. Another person may say, they gotta stay after school for thirty minutes, or, or, so there's, there, there may be some differentiating of, 'cause you won't be able to hit every scenario to be the same across the entire district.
So in my opinion, you know, when you have a student against student incident is one thing, but we're seeing a lot or hearing a lot of student against teacher and student against security guard, and I think that the consequences for that should be a lot more severe. And I don't know if there's a line that's drawn when they put their hands on, you know, an, an official.
Mr. Alvarez, sorry to interrupt here.
No, go ahead, Brandon.
I just wanna say the Behavior Work Group that Sean and I are part of, and UTW and SEIU are part of, we're actually working on a behavior menu right now that we are considering for the district. It's nothing that's been approved. We're just an information group right now gathering that. So we don't have a system-wide solution to what you're saying right now, but what Mr. Alvarez is saying is that we have some consistent practices, but it's not a systemic thing that we have, but we are gathering that information as a team from UTW, SEIU, and, and the BOE representatives that are representing each of you. So that's what we're working on right now.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I just want everybody to feel safe, and, and I want everyone to know that we are really addressing this, and we're taking it very serious, and we appreciate everyone's hard work, and I thank you for this. Thank you.
And thank you, Hazel. Diane?
Uh, with the unique incidences per day, do all schools report all incidences into synergy? Or do they use other systems?
The, the common system that we, that we use is synergy. There's, but we, we have heard in elementary that there are some that put them in synergy, but there's also another system that they may put on the side, depending if it's a tier-one or tier-two or tier-three behavior.
Okay. And then I do agree with Hazel on, there should be a difference between if students fight with one another versus strike one of our staff members. I do agree that we should come down pretty hard on that. There is never a reason for a student to lay hands on one of our staff members. And so if that's a behavior menu item, then I would like to see that added on there, because I think our staff should, they shouldn't have experience in, on the wrestling team to have to serve within our district. And, and I would like to make sure that our staff knows that, that we have their back and that we will create a safe working environment for them.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? This was a report for us to receive and file, and again, we appreciate your giving us this report. Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, elementary math, or, under education, excuse me, elementary math curriculum.
Welcome again, Amanda, and welcome again, Holly.
You good?
Dr. Thompson, go ahead.
Okay, so we are moving very quickly into this item, elementary math curriculum. And it is always fun to be able to get new curriculum and get cool things, new cool, up-to-date things. We do have a real rigorous process that we use to select our curriculum, and so we wanna make sure that you all are aware of what that process is and how we go about selecting and adopting curriculum. So without further ado, I'll turn it to my colleagues.
It's good to see you all again. I'm here with Holly, and we're here to talk about our elementary math pilot and adoption process. But it would be remiss of me not to recognize Connie Malakot. She is our elementary math curriculum specialist, jack-of-all-trades, and this is a lot of work. And she is one person who is doing this work with the support of her team, but really she is bearing the brunt of the effort, and she is dedicated, and she is passionate about mathematics and the students in Wichita Public School. So thank you, Connie. Holly's gonna start us off with our why.
So we're gonna kind of take you guys back to where we've been in elementary math. We know this is a first big-time curriculum adoption that we've had in a while, so we're gonna walk backwards before we tell you what's next. So we're gonna look at where we've been in elementary math specifically. So the last time we had a formal curriculum adoption, adoption for elementary math was in two thousand eight. So if you do a quick little math, about fifteen years ago, following that, we piloted in that year, and we adopted it and implemented in two thousand nine. And sometimes we get unlucky, and we did at that time, and in two thousand ten was when new standards were adopted.
So, and those standards shifted significantly. So that was when Common Core came out, and the state of Kansas adopted the Kansas College and Career Readiness Standards, which were a very big shift from where Kansas standards had been in mathematics specifically. So we had just purchased a curriculum, standard shifted. So we were using that curriculum, was everyday math at the time. And we were seeking to use it as best we could, as well as understand the new curriculum. But as we were using that during that time, it was becoming very apparent that it wasn't going to meet the needs of the new rigorous standards. And so we began supplementing to start. We were using a free resource to supplement, primarily Engage New York, starting in 2010. And we're doing that particularly in the upper grades in elementary, but began realizing we need to supplement this at all grade levels. And so in 2016 was when we officially said, "We can't continue asking our teachers to use these two resources," and began using Engage New York as the primary resource for elementary math. So in 2019 was when we had originally intended and began the work to start the new pilot process of an elementary math curriculum. But something big happened that year. The COVID pandemic hit us, and so that work was put on pause in the 2019-2020 school year. So once we've been able to have students and staff back, we have restarted that process this school year. So as you look at the screen, you look at your slides, you can see the timeframe between when we piloted and began a curriculum, 2008, 2009, to where we are. So it's been a pretty significant time since we've had a updated curriculum for our teachers in elementary. So anytime we are looking at resources, programs, professional development, anything, we want to make sure we're aligned to our district vision and mission and strategic plan. So as you all know, it's important for our students to be empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. We want to do this through providing them a rigorous educational environment and making sure we have equitable access to resources for all our kids. We don't want one school to have a great resource, and another school across town to not have a great resource. So we want all kids to have that, and make sure it's meeting the needs of all our students. Additionally, when we dig into our strategic plan, we think about the strategic plan goal of increasing graduation rate, which is really easy to think about that as a secondary goal. But if you know our indicators of success, one of those is successful completion of Algebra I, which is our freshman-level math class. So if we don't have great math instruction from great math resources aligned to our standards all the way down through elementary, our high school teachers can't save them in one year to help them complete that. So really, that goal of graduation rate is a K-12 goal. And so as we do this, we hope we help that as well. And additionally, having great resources really could, I could tell you how we support all of these themes, but it's helping all of our learners, it's helping students have post-secondary success. It's an investment in our staff when we buy high-quality resources. So teachers aren't having to plan from five different things. They have one high-quality resource. And anytime we adopt a curriculum, we provide professional development so teachers know how to use it, they know the components in it, they get time to understand it before they implement that. So when we begin these decisions, there's a lot of work. As Amanda referenced, Connie's been digging into this. So we want to give you just a little bit of background. If you have questions on this, please don't hesitate to ask at the end. But we look at a lot of different research things that are out there, things such as ed reports. It is an independent organization that researches and digs into all types of curriculum. So that's one data point we would look at. What Works Clearinghouse is another site we use that just has a ton of research projects that have been done around curriculum, as well as state guidance, national guidance, as we just begin to decide, what do we even want to look for? Because on the regular, Amanda and I get about three or four emails a week of, "Hey, we have this curriculum, can we talk to you about it?" So how do we decide of those hundreds of emails we get a week, which ones do we want to look at more? So these resources help us narrow that down. So as we looked at that research and those different sites, these six that are on the screen were what made it through that initial vetting. Does it have some good data and research behind it? Is it aligned to standards? And will it meet the needs that we're looking for? So we started with these six. This on the screen is some examples of one-pagers that we asked those six companies to provide. I know it's really small. We didn't give it to you, because this was in the, that 2019-2020 school year. So we're well past this process. We asked them to tell us how it aligned to our standards, particularly the standards that we prioritize in elementary, as well as what it would provide our teachers. So just as we began vetting, "How do you meet our needs in Wichita?" Really make them, as the company, sell it for us. We also are provided, from our state Department of Education, what do we need to prioritize as we look at any curriculum, but specifically in math? So these are some examples that we are provided by our state. So does it have a great progression of standards? Does the kindergarten resource support what they need to do in first grade, and so on? Is there a nice progression of standards? Does it use effective teaching practices? And does it have a focus on the grade-level standards? So the state of Kansas has major standards, supporting standards, and additional standards, and really saying, "You want to have a curriculum that's hitting those major standards the majority of the time." Additionally, the NCTM is the National Council for Teachers of Mathematics. They provide us information on what you should look at when you're looking at a resource. And the two big things are, does it align to standards? And does it keep student learning at the focus?
So that was a lot of the preliminary work that Connie and our task forces did to narrow down. And then we started to determine as a district what's important to us. So we know what KSDE says, we know what NCTM says, but what do our teachers feel like the students here in Wichita Public Schools need in their mathematics curriculum? So this is where we start to pull in staff and give them some voice in this process. We had between 40 and 50 certified staff members who joined our math task analysis team. They met over three nights, deep diving into all six of these curriculums. And they represented all walks of life, if you will, for certified staff. We had every grade level represented, special areas such as interrelated, categorical, gifted. We had instructional coaches, principals, assistant principals, district administrators, all coming together to look through what we had determined were our six. They were also given a questionnaire before they started, "What's important to you?" And they came up with six things that rose to the top for them. And first and foremost, we were glad to see, was aligned to our current practices with proficiency scales and standards reference grading. Secondly, making sure that our students demonstrate their knowledge first through conceptual understanding. Thirdly, spiraling or opportunities for review. We know that sometimes kids don't get it the first time around. So how often are we providing the opportunity to go back and relearn critical standards? Also, how friendly it was for teachers to use? What's their digital platform? What are their materials? The embracing and supporting of productive struggle or rigor. And last but not least, connected to the SMP, Standards for Mathematical Practices. These were all important pieces on this survey, but these six were the ones that sifted out to the top when we asked this group of people. So next for them was to use a comprehensive rubric to analyze those six curriculum. So these teams were broken up into groups, and they each took two parts of this rubric. We started with KSDE's rubric that they use, and then we aligned it to what we needed for our district, based on the survey and the needs. So we were looking for things like, are there, is there SRG alignment? Is there support and clarity for instruction? Is there student discourse? Is there critical vocabulary taught that's around mathematics? And these teams basically took two, and then looked at all six curriculums with those two lenses in mind the whole time. When we collected their data, which was part of the evaluation process, remember, we were trying not to do six. We're doing three, and that's been quite the undertaking in our district. So we wanted to narrow that number down. And when we sorted through the data, really, the three companies that sifted to the top were those that showed evidence of SRG, because that was a priority for our teachers. So we are currently piloting Everyday Math Four, Ready, and Illustrative Mathematics. You can see our friends here, I think these students are from Washington Elementary, showing off their materials. So once we had decided on our three, the next is to get input from our administrators and teachers. We had just overwhelming interest, if you will. I mean, principals were emailing us, my whole team, "All my teams want to pilot, this team wants to pilot." It's obvious that they needed something new in elementary math. So much so that Connie and I spent a Sunday with these color-coded cards, trying to decide who was going to pilot, because not everyone who wanted to could. We looked at title, non-title, programs, small buildings, big buildings, every building that you could think of. And we came up with the following buildings that you see on the screen. So some buildings did elect to do all-staff. So those are in gray. We have Cloud, the entire staff, including their PBS program, is piloting Everyday Math Four. Isley, if you know anything about Isley, they have many special programs. And so all of their programs are also piloting. They're doing illustrative math in LearnZillion. And then Stanley and Peterson are both piloting all building with Ready. The ones below that represent smaller portions of piloting teachers. So you might have one team at McLean, but two teams at Hyde, three teams at Buckner, but one at Dodge. In all, the numbers at the bottom are the coaches, administrators, and teachers being touched, if you will, by this pilot process. So to start the journey, we really had to train and communicate well. Prior to a pilot, during a pilot, and after a pilot, communication is key. So we started with prior to the pilot through that task force. But now that we are in it, we have different ways that we communicate with our piloting teachers and administrators. We have a Microsoft Team for each company, as well as a Google folder for each company. There's a Q&amp;A that is live 24/7. The teachers can pop in their questions, and the companies are answering those questions on that Google Doc. And then we had our first community night back in September. It was not as well-attended as we would hope, so we have planned another one. And we're hoping our community and our board members will come and look at what we are trying to decide on for our math curriculum. We trained in February of 2022 during a district in-service day for all piloting teachers. And then we offered summer trainings and refreshers or full-day trainings for anybody who had missed the February training. And then we have continued support. We've had office hours, continuous learning events, intentional planning nights. We post different types of resources to help them align with SRG. And then we are in discussions around additional options for second semester support. So where we are now is in the feedback and learning walk stage. This goes through fall to winter of 2022, and we're actually continuing our learning walks. I think we'll be at Menaha maybe tomorrow or Wednesday. And I know Connie was at Enterprise this morning, just talking to teachers. And we're gathering their feedback and their data. What do you like? What do you not like? How are your students doing? What do their grades look like? What's the data telling us? So Connie and our purchasing department, as well as myself and others, have visited over 50 classrooms at this point in the first semester, talking to teachers and watching kids do math. So what's next is hopefully, with your approval, we would bring you a curriculum by April to look at for adoption, for elementary math. We're going to continue to support and analyze data until then. And our second community night is February 28th. That will be held at AMAC. And then again, by April, we hope to bring a proposed curriculum to you between those three. Were you to vote on an adoption for elementary math, we would move into next year, which would be a planning phase. As you all are well aware, we are in letters world. And elementary science of reading is what's on our plate right now, and it needs to be. So we felt like one year of preparation for this math pilot, instead of putting new math curriculum on an already letters-full plate for teachers, might have been kind of that breaking point. So next year would be time for us to train, purchase, barcode, get resources to buildings. And then we would offer additional trainings as well in the summer, all in hopes that we would train all buildings to implement in the 24-25 school year and continue to support them with professional learning at that time. What questions might we answer for you?
Excuse me. Amanda, you're not asking for us to pick the curriculum tonight?
Nope.
Okay, I want to make sure I got that clear. But you are looking that probably there will be, before the school year's over?
Yes, by April is the hope.
So my two quick questions are, how old is the current curriculum that we're using for our math program at elementary level?
We started, go ahead, Holly.
So if we were using the last one we purchased, 2009, but we're using Engage New York, which is a free resource, it does update every year, I believe. And Connie and her team tries to incorporate those updates. So I can't speak to the last time it specific. They just make kind of small nuanced changes each year. But I would say 2016 was probably when it had the biggest update to it, when we began officially.
Is that fairly common, six to seven years before you? And I'm assuming some school districts that are in tougher shape than we are have to hang on to older curriculum much longer than they would really like to. So, and we've done a good job of budgeting so that we can move on in a timely fashion, I'm assuming.
And the state updates standards every seven years. So we try to follow that, though it's not always perfect.
Yes, couldn't perfectly align. The second question I had real quick was, and this is kind of off the wall, but have we ever discussed with university math teachers on what kind of curriculum they would like to see us use more?
Some on our team have been involved, and just specifically WSU has had some things. The hard piece of that is that university instruction is content first. I'm going to give you the content, and I hope you learn it. Where we know in K-12, how you teach it is just as important as the content. So they are, the university is more going to say, "We want them to have these skills," and they are involved. Actually, the work of Common Core involved more people at the higher ed level, as well as K-12, because of what do we want them to know when they go into college. The unique piece of K-12 curriculum is how we teach it, as much as what we teach.
That makes sense. Thank you very much. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you for your report. I have two questions. One is about the buildings that are piloting, because we have at least one building for each of the, that the whole building is doing it. And there are several buildings below it where you've got select teachers that have bought into it and are doing it. But do we have a good compliance of going across the board, K-5, as you look at all these bits and pieces that they're doing?
Yes, so let me make sure I have your question correctly. So we're not overloaded with just fifth-grade teachers.
That's what I, that's my question.
That's when Connie and I were sorting. It was, do we have three-to-five kindergarten, three-to-five first grade, very consistent equity across the board, and who was piloting? It's a great question.
So we would have, just as an example, 10 people that have done kindergarten, 10 that would have done first grade, and so on. Even though they're not necessarily all doing it in these given buildings.
Correct.
For each company too, Cheryl, so each company has. Each company, right. Yeah, thank you. My next question is on, because I know that we need math now. And moving two years out, I understand letters. I truly understand that. And I do know that we've got a full plate for teachers, and we're not anxious to add more to it. But if you had a teacher at a given building that says, "I want to move to the new curriculum sooner than the whole district does," could they be added into the pilot people?
Our current plan, let's say that we, I'm going to give them A, B, and C. Let's say we went with Curriculum A. Current plan is anybody who piloted Curriculum A during this school year would get to continue with it next school year. Everyone else at that point would revert back to Engage New York for one year for that prep year. And then we train at the end of next year so that everyone, everyone is prepared to implement the following year, 24-25. We would definitely have to consider the implications of picking and choosing whether you want to move forward or not, especially when we would have, we already have a plan for if you're not going to continue with what we've chosen. Was that your question?
No, that's not my question. My question is, if you had a teacher that says, "I want to start, I want to start with a new curriculum." the new curriculum sooner than, like, next year instead of the year after," is there any kind of option, and the answer may be no to this, to add them to the pilots?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was going to say, no, not at this time.
Amanda handled that. Thank you, Cheryl. Diane?
Cheryl, I think, were you asking if they were to adopt, if they wanted to pilot the curriculum that they were choosing for the district?
Yes.
If they just wanted to get that year early?
Whatever. If we adopt something in April, we'll have, in quotes, "an adopted curriculum," but it won't go into effect for another year.
Right, but you're not asking if they can pick and choose one of the three curriculum?
Oh, no, no, no. No, I'm talking about the piloted, the one that the district has already approved. That's correct.
Would that answer still be the same, then?
It would still be the same.
Okay.
There's just a lot of things that has to happen. I mean, you got to, first of all, they have to deliver curriculum, and then the curriculum has to go through a process where they get them logged into things, and then, you know, you give teachers these materials, and then they'll stand there and go, "Well, what do I do with this?" So, they'll need a little bit of support on how to use the curriculum, how it's all set up, and that kind of thing. And we don't really have capacity in the district to venture off on this professional development. This group over here is doing it, and then what happens when we all start, some people have already had it, some people haven't, and then you kind of...
You're in different phases of implementation.
Yeah, so we try to stick together as best as we can because of capacity issues. That's the reason why.
Okay. With the curriculum pilots that are going on, are we seeing a dramatic increase in academic outcomes?
Connie's currently analyzing first and second quarter grades, and also we're looking at some of the screeners that came in from fall to winter and the growth in there. The best indicator for us is to go into classrooms and watch kids do the math, and whether or not they're successful in those daily interactions with the content that the teachers are teaching. So, that's why our walkthroughs are so important, but also talking to teachers, because we know we can look at some amount of data all day long, but sometimes formative data is what should inform us the most on adoption, adopting a curriculum.
Okay.
And I would also just add, unfortunately, we're not going to see, no matter how long we would pilot, a significant bump in academic data from a pilot. It usually is going to take one to three years to see that academic on that achievement data. Like, we'll hopefully see some small progress things, maybe in screeners and things like that, but it's hard to see it as quickly as we often want to.
So, if we're going to implement this, did you say 24-25 school year?
That'd be the hope, yes.
So, then it would be kind of like 28 before we'd see real...
We would love it to be sooner, but... It's possible, but...
Now, is this, I'm assuming this is all for elementary school?
Yes, this is K-5, pre-K, not included.
Okay.
But this isn't the only effort to raise math achievement, is that correct? I mean, we're not putting all our eggs in one basket, saying we picked the miracle curriculum, thus our test scores are going to start going up. There's a lot of extra effort going on in that area, such as tutoring, summer school, even dealing with behavior issues, and just that, and more tutoring type of situation and mentoring situations. So, I just, I just didn't want there to be any confusion that we're going to wait three years for achievement to go up.
Right, and let me clarify my statement. I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that at all. I'm just doing a little math, but I'm not, I'm not trying to imply that, that we won't see student achievement for the next three years. I apologize if that was how it came across, so...
And if there was one curriculum that would do that, everyone in the country would buy it, and we should write it and sell it.
They'd be a multi-billionaire right now, but I do appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Job well done.
Diane, I'm hopeful that the work we're doing with the science of reading will actually have a greater impact on math as well, because if you are a reader, you can read math problems, you can deduce, you can think complexly, com- complexity, something along that, people, whatever that word is. So, I'm hoping that through our focus on reading, we will start to see impact on math, whether we adopt a curriculum or not.
Right, and that goes to that multifaceted aspect that President Reeser was referring to as well. So, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify the statement.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns or comments? If not, we thank you for the report, and we look forward to the February...
April.
April.
But you can come in February to the community night.
That's what I was thinking about, because you'd mentioned you were disappointed in the turnout last time, so we look forward to advertising that a little more and getting word out about the February chance for the public to come look at it. Okay.
You're going to see it on social media soon, and you all are invited to come as well.
And we did a lot of due diligence even to narrow it down to these three, correct? Okay. Yes, we sure can. The board's going to take a five-minute break this time, and we will be back at about 9:12. The Wichita Board of Education is back from a break. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, consent.
And since Hazel mentioned that she was nice going last, we'll make her go first this time.
All right. I would like to pull A2, which is district calendar. C1 on the purchasing consent number two, oh, excuse me. Is that yours?
It's okay.
No, I'll do six.
Okay.
I'll do six.
C6, then?
Yes. And under D, programs and grants, I'd like to pull one and three.
Say that one again.
One, Modern Classroom Project, and three, Varsity Tutors.
What's the number again?
D.
D, D.
D.
Yeah.
D, one and three. Programs and grants, Modern Classroom Project and Varsity Tutors.
And let's hope nobody calls out bingo.
Nobody would.
So, Hazel's pulling A2, C6 under purchasing, and D1 and 3. Okay. Cheryl, any consent items?
I have nothing to pull, thank you.
Kathy?
C2.
Bingo. Wow, that is, it's...
It's really C1, C1 under number two.
Yes.
C1 under number two.
Bingo.
Julie?
I'm pulling C4.
And I'm, I have no consent items to pull. Ernestine?
I have none to pull.
Diane?
No, I have nothing to pull.
I moved that we adopt the consent agenda except for A2, C's one and two under the purchasing, C4, D1, and D3. Moved by Stan, seconded by Ernestine to approve the consent agenda items except for the ones noted. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, let's start with A2. Hazel?
Yes. And I just have a question about, it's not a bad question, I just want to know...
I didn't anticipate one.
In-service, I want to know the distinction between an in-service day and a non-teaching duty day.
So, an in-service day is a day that is for district staff to work in their buildings. It is often where the principal plans professional development within each individual building, whereas a non-teaching duty day is a day that is afforded to teachers to either take the day off or is specifically dedicated right after the end of a quarter grading period that they are allowed to complete their grades. However, if they have their grades completed and they have turned them into the principal, and the building principal or admin has signed off on it, then they are not expected to work the following day.
Okay. And I noticed that there, there's a lot of in-service days. There's 12 in-service days. Is that under a normal calendar? Do we always have, I mean, and does that take away from their teaching days?
There is typically a day, around a day per month that has been built into the calendar since I assumed this role. No, it does not take away from the classroom instruction time, I mean, because the calendar is built with an adequate and fair number of hours to meet the state requirements. So, again, the professional development that happens within services is to give teachers and staff a natural break and collaboration within the buildings to be able to plan and continue to move forward in their endeavors.
Okay. I just wanted clarification on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion on C2?
Yes, I make, yes, I move that we...
Yes, I'll get you.
She has a question. Okay, I move that we...
Approve C2, the district calendar?
Yes.
Second.
Moved by Hazel, seconded by Cheryl to adopt consent item A2, district calendar. Ernestine?
I wanted to know, what was the logic of having another in-service right after Labor Day so early in the school year? That seems like just when you get the, rolling with the kids, then to have the break. Now, I understand that makes it so the families can have a Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday vacation, but I suspect that's not why we have in-service.
Thank you, Sean. You sat down on purpose, didn't you? Our in-service specifically, we had moved a, an in-service day from October up to Teacher Report Week in order to help us do restorative practice training during Teacher Report Week. We need a district in-service at the beginning of the school year, either during Teacher Report Week or right there at the, right after Labor Day that you're referring to. So, it was either one of those two, it's either going to be a building in-service day, and then we take one district in-service during Teacher Report Week, or we move the district in-service right after Labor Day so we can free up for those schools to have two days of mandatory restorative practice training to give them time to do the other professional learning before the school starts. So, we need a district in-service day, and since we've always had that at that particular time, we made that a district in-service day.
I was just wondering why we didn't do it in October when it had a little bit longer time for kids to be back at school.
After this, after this next year, we will bring back the in-service day in October.
Okay.
So, you'll have one after Labor Day still, but you'll have an additional one in October because we're going to take it back from Teacher Report Week, put it back into October. We just needed two years of the way it is now because of restorative practice training.
All right, thank you. Motion's on the floor. All those in favor?
Stan?
Yes.
We need the motion to be seconded.
I second it.
It was, it was seconded by Cheryl. Sorry about that. I probably didn't say it loud enough. Motion carries 7-0. Second one that was pulled was under bids, C, and we'll stay with Hazel, so it's C6, custodial services.
Okay, that's C1, six, number six.
Yeah, C1, six, excuse me. Luke? And Hazel, what's your question?
My question is, I think I questioned this last year when we, this came up. My question is, you're asking for $525,000, and I believe last time it was $600,000. Am I right?
So, yeah, it was in July, we awarded, it was like $625,000. We only, this is the remaining portion. Basically, we didn't use the entire 625. We're just switching vendors and using the remaining portion of those funds that were originally slated for custodial services with a new company.
So, it's not additional?
Correct.
But, okay, and, and so, do you have a contract with, for the custodial services? Or do you, is this just like the amount of money that you can spend? This is your budget?
We, it's both. We have a contract in place, or we will after tonight, but it'll be for that amount, not to exceed.
Not to exceed that amount?
Correct.
And the services that they're providing, are they services that our custodians could be doing, or why, why are we outsourcing for maintenance?
Yeah, it really is just because we are having difficulty filling our custodial vacancies. For whatever reason, they're able to, they have custodians that they can deploy at our sites. They've had, I'm sure they've had staffing challenges as well, but they do have employees available to plug into our schools. But we do have some screening. Some of our screening is probably a little more stringent to be a district employee. That is a little prohibitive for, for some people who get jobs with us. So, we do have vacancies that are sitting out there. We'd love to fill them. We'd love to bring people in, but for now, we can't. So, this is an alternative, alternative way to get some coverage in our building.
So, if you wanted to apply for a maintenance position, what is the process for that? What, what does it entail?
So, well, apart from just the normal application process, they have to, I got some HR people behind here, but I believe they have to do a written and math test, and then we have our normal, like, drug screening and all that, so...
So, is any of the process a stumbling block that is keeping us from hiring people?
Honestly, I think the math tests might, might be a little bit of a hindrance. The written tests, you need to be able to read labels and things on, you know, chemical, chemical labels, the MSDS. But on, on math, it's, there's really not a whole lot of math that's involved in custodial positions these days, so that's something we've talked about, maybe changing at some point.
Okay, what would be the process to do that?
Just need to talk to that guy over there and work on some, work on some things.
I'll, I'll respond for him. The answer is, we will look into those ideas and thoughts. There, there could be, I know back in the day, they did have to mix things, and they needed to know how to put, know numbers and add and subtract things in order to be able to mix things. And now that we have up-to-date things that mix for us...
Pre-mix.
Yeah, they mix for us.
Yeah.
That could be something that we can consider. So, the answer is, we will look into it and have further conversations and see if that is an area where we would want to kind of, I'm not going to say lower the expectations, but take a different approach to how we, how we hire for custodians.
That'd be great, and then we could use our own people and hire our own people. So, thank you.
Oops.
Thank you, Luke.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot there, Sean.
Ernestine?
Well, actually, that kind of answers the question I was going to answer, ask, was if, were we hiring an outside service? But I do know that, having just talked to school district people all over the state, hiring custodians right now is, because they can go make lots of money at fast foods. There's so many other options that coming in to be the custodians at a school is, right now, every school district is hurting on that, just as they're hurting on, just as every school district is short on teachers and short on parents, that, but the custodian, but I, that was what I was going to ask, but we're not actually outsourcing to another, to another service. We're still going to have ours. They're just coming in to do the fill-in where we...
Right, yeah, it's just 16 additional custodians that they're providing to supplement our staff, so it's really not a whole lot, but 16 for a year.
I know some other, other districts are actually literally not going to have their own custodians. They're just hiring some other company, and so let it be their headache.
And I do just want to add, it's not the math that's, that's the prohibiting factor. I don't want HR to think I'm throwing them under the bus. I, I think we just have really high expectations for our employees. These, you know, custodians, I'm sure will be good as well, but they've got a little more flexibility for if someone's not working out, and we just invest a lot into our employees, and we do everything we can to make sure we're going to retain them long-term. So, I think that's really what it comes down to, is just hire, we have internal, high expectations.
And I want to be clear, because this comes up sometimes, and then we get emails, and I want it to be clear, we are not looking to take away custodians from the Wichita Public Schools and replacing them with outsources, sourcing. That is not what we're talking about at this point. We're not talking about that. What we're saying is, is we have some holes that need to be filled. We do not have those holes filled. We want our, our classrooms to be clear. We do not have those holes filled. We want our classrooms to be cleaned up, and our restrooms and floors to be clean, and we need additional staff to ensure that that happens. And that is why we're outsourcing the hole, it's kind of like that. But we are not in the business at this point of talking about replacing our current staff. As a matter of fact, we wish we could hire more of them and not have to have contracted out services, but we're doing this because we want to make sure the rooms and things are prepared for teachers.
Thank you, Luke.
And I would just add that, another reason why we may have slightly higher expectation of our janitorial or custodial staff is because a custodial person cleaning the epic building during the day, at night, is not running across schoolchildren all day long. And then when we identified and recognized our custodial staff, I think it was last meeting in December, we have a lot of interaction between our custodial staff and the children. So, being a custodial person with us is far different than being a custodial person with a private industry with no children involved. Hazel, do you want to make a motion on that one?
Yes, I move that we adopt C1, number six, custodial services.
I second it.
Moved by Hazel, seconded by Ernestine to approve C16. Motion carries seven zero. The next one is C12. Kathy?
Thank you. Okay, oh, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caleb Stoppel, and I'm the Director of Athletics. Happy to help with your question.
Thank you. Tell me about this. Tell me why 200,000, tell me the last time we had uniforms. Tell me about this. I know nothing about this.
So, I'm happy to share that the work that we are doing right now is to build a district high school uniform rotation. Currently, our buildings have been self-sufficient in their own rotation, their own schedule of how those uniforms are replaced. We are looking at, at building a consistent, equitable district rotation. So, we're taking their work, and we're making it even better, to the extent that we're looking to replace uniforms every four years for certain grade levels of that sport, JV and varsity, so that after those four years, we rotate those down to the sub-varsity. We're asking for this amount not to exceed 200,000, because we need to place orders right now for the fall of next year because of production timelines and requirements.
Have you talked with all of the other athletic directors at the high schools and middle schools about this?
Yes, ma'am, yes, and in fact, it was through the work of those building rotations that the high school ADs already created that went into compiling this district rotation.
Was there anyone who objected?
No, ma'am.
Nobody objected?
No, because what was taken from those high school plans made up the one document now. So, basically, for example, if East High was going to be ready for new basketball uniforms next year, in the rotation that we built together, I tried my best to hold to that same date. Moving seven schools into one rotation, we tried our best to keep to the date they already had planned, and I think we hit it very closely.
So, down here under the appendix, it says that there is Omnia Partners contract. Are we, are we voting to say yes to a contract? Are we going to go into contract with these people?
Contract, can you say that in another way, specifically about uniforms?
There's a contract and a contract number here already about the uniforms. So, are we voting on going into a contract with somebody for five years?
So, I'll answer this the best I can, and then I don't know, Fabian might help with some purchasing language here. We have, from my point, we are looking at what uniforms we need for what sport, and that's what I'm working on the schools and the ADs with, so we can meet that need. Fabian, can you help with any of the purchasing conversation?
This, Omnia would be the cooperative that we are working to get into this agreement with, that we'll be working through. So, I'm not sure exactly what your question is in terms of...
There's a contract number down here with BSN Sports. Who is BSN Sports?
BSN Sports is the company, the apparel company that we will be working with, again, going through that Omnia Partners Cooperative Agreement. And so, yes, I believe the contract listed is the one for Omnia Partners, but again, we're going to be working through that and taking, taking advantage of that cooperative, which is a common practice that we do. Omnia is a cooperative that we often go through for other, for many other type of vending that we go through the district.
I wanted to explain to her what that, what that cooperative practice is. I think that's where she's struggling with, and having a contract number.
No, actually not. No, that's okay, that's okay. And this is in Dallas, Texas, correct?
I believe, yes, the, yes, the company is, is from Dallas, Texas.
Is there a reason why we're not using local companies here in Wichita?
This is, for a, for a contract as large as ours is, not a lot of companies can serve us in this manner. We went through a whole process of meeting with BSN, and we looked at kind of the type of uniforms that we would be getting. We actually brought in our athletic directors as well as our high school principals so that we could look at kind of narrowing it down. But again, there isn't anyone local that can serve at this magnitude. And again, when we're looking at this too, we're looking at balancing not only local, but also balancing best pricing for us. And this was, as we compared all of the pricing that we received, the best of all worlds. Again, it allows us to be able to properly budget, moving down the line, and know kind of what to expect, and also sets us on a regular rotation.
Dr. Thompson, okay.
And I'm going to say, as far as buying local, that is our number one goal, is to buy local. Any and everything that we can buy locally, we're going to do that. But there are some times where we have to go outside because the capacity of them not being able to serve us, as he spoke. But I will tell you, they know I fuss all the time about making sure that we spend our money here in town, because that's important.
And I've heard two names, this is part of it, but not part of it. I've heard Under Armour and Nike. Tell me about those two companies, and which one are you choosing to go with? And why?
That has, I will tell you, those, that, what you're asking about has nothing to do with this.
And I said that.
But, but right now, I don't think we have enough information to be doing a lot of talking about.
Caleb seems to...
Well, I'm going to say this, we are not talking about Under Armour and Nike tonight. We need to stay on this particular topic and get this one voted upon. And if there needs to, we will bring back information around Nike and Under Armour when it's, when it's appropriate.
Yes, ma'am, and that is our plan for the February board meeting. Administration from Purchasing Department and myself are working on an informational presentation to you in February.
I would like to postpone any motion from my side.
If you're not, I was going to, I actually was going to put, I figured you might, from the, you might be uncomfortable, so I was going to go ahead, and that's why I'm on here to make the motion, but I want to give Hazel a chance to say something.
Yeah, so I know initially when North High changed their mascot, that there would be an initiative to change all the uniforms, and I wanted to know how much this would affect North High's branding, and in the, and in the future, how much it would alleviate the, some of the costs that we'll be facing for North High's branding.
So, this will impact North High the same as it will impact all seven high schools, because the vision and purpose of a district uniform rotation is to be able to provide those athletic uniforms equitably across all seven high schools. Now, we've taken into account that all of the uniforms were replaced two years ago from North, and so, to not sustain full replacement every two years, we had to sprinkle in over the four-year rotation when this sport would get replaced, and this sport would get replaced. But to answer your question, North would be treated just the same as all seven high schools and are embedded in this rotation schedule.
Thank you, Hazel. I move that we adopt consent agenda item C12, athletic uniforms. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion carries six one. Thank you. The next one, I think logically, would be C4, Julie, under, let's see here. Yes, the, the contract construction manager at RISP program.
Yes, and the only reason I pulled this is just to acknowledge that I'm pleased that we're moving forward with the safety and security projects, and we have talked about this delivery system before in the past. I apologize, I wasn't available to help with the interview process, but Hutton Corporation is an excellent firm, and they'll do a great job. So, I move that we approve this item.
I second it.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Kathy to approve, under program grant D1. No, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead.
No, we're C4, under security improvement projects.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead there.
No worries.
I already flipped my page. Motion carries seven zero. Now, we're at program grants. D1, Modern Classroom Project, Hazel. Hazel, did you have a question on D?
I do, I do have a question.
Yeah.
I was wondering, the Modern Classroom Project, this is an SFR fund, and I was wondering how much training would be involved in this program? And how we're going to measure the success rate of this program? And is, if this training, and if this training is effective? And if we're going to have mandatory feedback from the participants?
Excellent. Brandon Johnson, Executive Director, Secondary Schools, here to answer some requests. Also, Holly's here, just in case I can't answer all of them, we are co-leading this work. So, the first question was, what kind of training will they provide, will be provided? So, they will be, they will get on-demand training. If you remember, last year, I brought up TIVO, which my friends still make fun of me to this day for saying that at the board table, TIVO. My administrative assistant is so young, she doesn't even know what that is. But what it is, is on-demand professional learning. So, our teachers who opt in to this Modern Classroom Project will have access to training whenever they have time in their schedule to do the training on-demand. So, it's up to them to engage when they have time. They also have a mentor that they will be tied to, and that mentor will give them direct feedback on the professional learning they do, and the lessons that they create in the Modern Classroom Project. What's the next question I can answer?
Are we going to measure the success? How are we going to measure it?
Okay, so we measure the success in multiple ways. We bring in the Modern Classroom, the Modern Classroom Project experts come in, and they walk with Holly and I, and we go do visits with these teachers, and we observe them implementing this procedure, which really is, they create little, small, five to seven-minute videos with them lecturing about the key target that they want the student to learn that day, and it could be from past lessons, future lessons. So, depending on where a kid might be, like Diane's ahead of me in class, so she's working on Unit 7, Target 2, she can go ahead and work on that video while I'm behind, and I'm working on Unit 5, Lesson 3. Those videos would be available. So, if the teacher can create that, that tool belt within their system and provide that support to their students, then they can be more accessible to the kids in the classroom who need their help right now. So, how we'll measure that is, how effective they are at getting to every single kid in their environment every single day. So, we have a Modern Classroom video that we put out, and we'd love to share that with you guys so you can see it. The teachers who are doing this are saying they've never had this much time to spend with each individual kid in each classroom. The other thing that's great about this is it's not mandated by us. This is all teacher-selected, teacher-run, teacher-driven, they get to choose what they do and do not do. We have no mandates in this, other than you have to complete the training to show progress so we can pay you for your time spent. So, if you don't complete the training, then we have no way of, like, recognizing what you did or didn't do to compensate you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you for explaining that. Anybody have anything? Okay, I move that we adopt D1.
Second.
I think I heard Cheryl first. Moved by Hazel, seconded by Cheryl. Motion carries seven zero. Also, under program grants, number two, pulled by, oh, excuse me, D3, Varsity Tutor Online, that was also pulled by Hazel.
Yes.
And go ahead, Hazel.
Yes, so we have, it's Varsity Tutors Online Tutoring Service, and it's a renewal. And I would like to, for you to explain to me the difference between the hot, homework hotline versus Varsity Online Tutoring.
Varsity Tutors is a elementary K5 online tutoring program. Our homework hotline started with being able to call in on a phone number here in the district to help students in any of their subject areas that they need. So, the Varsity Tutors, you can create a, say you're targeting students that are struggling in math, and you can create 20 kids to come in for after-school tutoring, and they can get tutors online through Varsity Tutors. The homework hotline, you can call in, you'll still, you'll get a tutor one-on-one, but you're talking on the phone. But I will say that the homework hotline now uses Teams as well, so there are some use of Teams so they can actually see the student and interact back and forth. So, it's just an additional tutoring program, Varsity Tutors additional tutoring program that can capture more students at one time because they have access to more tutors.
How many students do you feel like either of these programs are impacting?
120.
To get, both programs together, or each of the vars?
Just for Varsity Tutors, you can come on down, and, because we, right now, there's six schools that are going to be impacted with Varsity Tutors. We, last year, we, we contracted with them for all elementary, but when we monitored the, the usage, it wasn't as high, but we had some schools that's, so then, so this year, we, they were going to create their own tutoring programs, which did not come about. So, some of these schools said, hey, we want to, we were doing great with Varsity Tutors before, we want to continue now because our students need the extra help in the tutoring. So, I don't know, I don't want to call it a pilot, but we know that six schools were interested in saying, we want to bring it back the way we were doing it before, which is impacting, is that worth 120?
Otherwise, they would have had to recreate the will.
Correct, and that's what, that's what we were hoping that was going to happen at the beginning of this year. It just wasn't able to get done.
So, are we seeing an increase in their scores, their test scores? Is it, are we seeing that there's an impact on their learning? Or are you monitoring that?
So, with Varsity Tutors, we did contract them last year, and we did see an overall 17% growth with those 36 schools. The renewal part is kind of tricky on there, because I wouldn't call it necessarily a renewal since we're not renewing with all the 36 schools, we're only servicing those six schools. So, we will determine, and we let schools choose how they are going to select the students, whether that be FastBridge or State Assessment Data, or some, you know, teacher recommendation. So, it is on the six schools who have selected to participate in Varsity Tutors to determine.
So, you said there's 150 students, 120 students?
120, it's about, we gave schools up to 30 kids.
I was going to ask if there was a cap on how many students could participate.
They can do anywhere from 30 to 50 kids, but last year, we normally saw just 30 students.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I move that we adopt Varsity Tutors Online Tutoring Service.
D3, yes.
Second.
Moved by Hazel, seconded by Julie. Motion carries seven zero. That concludes the consent agenda. I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. And Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Operations, Election of Officers for the Board of Education. In accordance with BOE Policy 0100, Organization of the Board, at the Board's first meeting on or after the second Monday in January of each year, the Board shall elect a president and vice president from its members, each of whom shall serve for one year or until his or her successor is elected. The election of officer shall be by open ballot. Board policy stipulates that each member may vote for any member of the Board, and successive ballots shall be taken for each office... Board policy stipulates that each member may vote for any member of the board, and successive ballots shall be taken for each office until one member receives four votes. The newly-elected president and vice president shall assume their duties at the conclusion of the meeting at which they are elected.
Thank you, Patrick. I'm assuming you're going to, unless anybody has something, yeah, Ernestine.
Question. Do we vote for the president and vice president separately?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
We'll pass out the ballots now. And this will be for president. Correct. This one says it was cast by Julie.
Please switch.
I, I know Julie and I look a lot alike.
Thank you.
Diane, Ernestine, is yours ready? Okay.
Voting on the first ballot for president of the Board of Education, Diane Albert, votes for Cheryl Logan. Ernestine Crable, votes for Cheryl Logan. Stan Reeser, votes for Cheryl Logan. Julie Hedrick, votes for Cheryl Logan. Kathy Bond, votes for Cheryl Logan. Cheryl Logan, votes for Cheryl Logan. Hazel Stabler, votes for Cheryl Logan. The next president of the Wichita Board of Education is Cheryl Logan.
Thank you. Patrick, we will now pass out the ballots for the election of vice president. Yes.
First ballot on the vote for board vice president, Diane Albert, votes for Diane Albert. Ernestine Crable, votes for Diane Albert. Stan Reeser, votes for Diane Albert. Julie Hedrick, votes for Stan Reeser. Kathy Bond, votes for Diane Albert. Cheryl Logan, votes for Diane Albert. Hazel Stabler, votes for Diane Albert. The next vice president for the Wichita Board of Education is Diane Albert.
Congratulations Diane. Patrick, next item, please. And for those who may not be aware of how our officers work, the new officers will take over immediately at the end of adjournment tonight.
Next item. Under operations, appointment of subcommittee to review E S I complaint investigations under policy five one one six.
And this is very similar to our, this is our very first time we've had to put together a E S I subcommittee to review. But as you know, that the board, it, under recommendation of the Kansas Department of Education and Department of Justice, wanted the board to be more involved with complaint investigations regarding this. So we changed our policy back in June. So we need to make a new subcommittee to look at this complaint. And I move that we make a subcommittee of Cheryl, Diane Albert, Cheryl Logan, Diane Albert, and myself as a subcommittee.
Is that a motion?
And that's the motion.
I second that. Because I think it says that automatically the president has to.
The president has to be on it, and, and we're not, yeah, we're not having it right now, so it has to be Cheryl. And then the, so the only question really is, who's the other two? Yeah. Yes, Kathy?
So does one board member have the jurisdiction to say, this is the way it's going to be? Is, I mean, whatever somebody else wanted to be on the subcommittee?
If somebody else wanted to be on, I, I don't, I guess you could make a different motion. But no, one, one person, it does not get to influence exactly. It's basically to review the complaint.
Okay, because this down here says, the subcommittee shall consist of the board president and two other board members selected by the board.
Right. And that's what we're doing today.
And so you automatically said that you want to do it without asking anybody else if they wanted to do it? He just made a motion.
No, I, I'm just volunteering to do it. I'm not, if somebody else is interested, we, we can definitely do that, too. We definitely know, need to have Cheryl, and I thought with Diane being the new vice president, she might be a good person. And with me being the immediate past president, with a board officers, it might just be more consistent. But if somebody, if a third person wants to take my place, that's fine. Yeah.
I was just discussing.
Yeah. Okay, motion on the floor?
I don't want to do it.
Motion carries six one, with one abstain, and under our policy, abstain is a no vote. So motion carries six one. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
No thank you for tonight.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Board of Education report and requests.
Since we started the consent agenda on Hazel's side, we'll start with Diane's side this time.
I will go quickly, but I've been very, very busy. So I've attended almost all the stakeholder listening sessions that we had last Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and literally listened to hundreds of people share their thoughts and desires in a new superintendent. And my desire was to understand and hear from many different perspectives. I met with many different people regarding the student behavior issues our district is facing, including a meeting with the N double A C P Youth Council, where the new chief of police, Cedric County detectives, and councilman Brandon Johnson were also in attendance to hear directly from students and some of the issues that they face. And there will be more meetings in the near future with this group. I attended Battle of the Books at AMAC, and this is where students engage in a reading competition that tests their reading comprehension in a game-style format. They read books from a list, and there are sixty-four books on that list. And it is an important opportunity for elementary students to compete in a fun and academic activity that promotes the important skill of reading. These students set goals, commit to reading books from the current list, and work together as a team to be prepared for their competition. And there were forty-six schools that participated this year. And then I also had the benefit of sitting back in the sound booth and to see our own staff members be able to produce the videos and see how they switch cameras, put things up on the screen, like the scores, and that was a, that was a boned benef, added benefit for that. So I recommend going to our website at U S D two five nine dot org to watch these students compete. Those videos are posted on there, and they're, they're quite fun to watch the kids become a little bit competitive. And then I also attended the showcase at Century Two, where our magnet schools and special programs were displayed for families to see. And I was pleasantly surprised to see so many students and families and staff in attendance there. And that's all I got.
Thank you Diane. Ernestine?
The main thing that I want to say is that I was in Topeka to lobby, no, to advocate for full funding. And one of the things is, I, I know that it was interesting that we were told, oh, you're not grateful enough that we fully funded regular ed. Well, we are grateful that they followed the, the court's decision and then, but because there are federal guidelines for special ed, they didn't fully fund special ed, and so we had to meet those federal guidelines. That meant that we had to take some of the money out of regular ed to go over there to meet the needs of special ed. So the fact that we got full funding for regular ed didn't solve the problem. When the state legislature has only come up with seventy percent of the amount of cost, and by their own law in two thousand and five, they passed a law that said that they would fund it at ninety-two percent. And yet, the last time that that funding happened, that much funding happened, was two thousand and eleven. So we are trying to show, not that we're trying to get extra money, or that we're grubbing for pennies, but that when you don't fund the special ed, it undermines funding the regular ed. And that was what we were up there for. And we met with a number of leaders, and I want to tell you that I was very impressed with the chair of the Senate Education Committee and the House Education Committee. They were very knowledgeable, very open, and very charming and funny and friendly. And that was a real, real surprise and a nice thing to happen, so. And yes, I've been to some meetings, too, but that's, I mean, to the schools and stuff, but that's okay.
Thank you, Ernestine. I just wanted to use my time to thank the community for this great privilege I've had to be the president for the last two years. It has, for my public part of my life, this has been the, one of the greatest thrills that I've ever had. And it really hit home this week when we thought about how much it takes the public support to run a, a public school system. And we appreciate our staff, and we appreciate everybody involved in this. And just, I will, hopefully, one day, I'll be talking about these last two years with probably whoever will listen. But I appreciate the privilege that the community gave me here. Thank you very much. Julie?
Yes, for my board report tonight, I just want to say how thankful I am to be here tonight. My husband did have his organ transplant on December seventeenth, and we were given permission to return home on January tenth. He is doing wonderful. I praise the Lord for his faithfulness and provision. I thank our donor family for their gift, and I thank you for your kind thoughts and prayers. I got home in time to participate in some of the superintendent listening sessions, and I'm now able to fully engage again in board meetings and business.
Thank you Julie. Kathy?
The Christmas miracle, yes. We're grateful for this. Okay. I attended a town hall to discuss the problem with fentanyl, and was quite shocked that seventy percent of the Percocets that are going out there are laced with fentanyl. And they are in our schools, as Terry knows. And, and to piggyback on that, I've attended a crime commission meeting and am going to be joining them. And they have got some initiatives that they want to bring to the board about how to combat this, or what we can, what they can do to help us. I also attended some stakeholder groups for the superintendent search, and I attended the showcase for our schools. Now, I have a question. Can you please tell me what the difference is between a tardy and an absent? Okay, and perhaps if I build my story up, you might know. Recently, it's come to my attention that there are buildings allowing students to come into the classroom with only ten minutes remaining in that class, and the student is only counted tardy, not absent. Now, mind you, the student arrived into the classroom disrupting the teacher and the students and missed the entire lesson. I cannot find a policy in which tardiness is addressed. There is one for absenteeism, intruency, but not tardiness. Policy fourteen sixty, which is student attendance, addresses the parent and the guardian as responsible under the Kansas compulsory school attendance law to attend school continuously each school year. Policy twelve twenty-five states that all high schools and middle schools have a day of seven hours and ten minutes of curriculum education. I'm assuming this is a standard for our state requirements. If students would be marked tardy coming in ten minutes before the end of class, would that mean that our records are showing a higher attendance rate to the state? And if so, it's, I just need some clarification, because that's not benefiting the student at all. Can you help me?
I, I can't help you present.
Yes, go ahead.
So we do have a process to talk, to determine whether a student is tardy or absent. And I'm not going to be able to give you the minute, on the minute, because I don't know. But I can tell you that ten minutes left into the classroom is an absence. That is not a tardy.
Okay, thank you. And do all of our principals of our buildings know that? And why would they give the teachers permission to mark them tardy?
Well, I don't know why they would do that, and if you could give me the school, we'll get that corrected.
I'll get that information for you.
And we'll get that corrected.
And just a follow-up. Last month, I had requested that Colonel Hester come and speak to us and giving us a presentation on J R O T C. Just wondered where we are with that.
We, we're, we got, we got, y'all have made a lot of requests, like pages of them. So I have, we have to do it in an order. We can't do all of them all in one time. So he will, he is definitely on the list. And we have some that we have from the other time that we're going to be doing next, next month. So he'll be coming sometime soon before the end of the, well, I, I won't say when, but he will be here.
Okay, and I have some, is this new, time for new business? No, this is.
No, not yet.
Time for new business, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, I'm done.
The presentation on J R O T C, Wendy, when did we have that extended presentation on J R, J R O T C? Where we had people come down and explain their, was that in November?
That makes different. October, yeah.
Yeah. But that was. But that was almost a, that was almost a presentation style. And the only thing I want to, thing, the only thing I want to keep in perspective is that we don't repeat a presentation over a program that we've already had that information on. That's not fair to the kids who are in the science club, who I don't think we've ever had a science club presentation with our participation. So I just want us to keep it in perspective that we have had presentations on JROTC in the past. And they've been pretty extensive. Cheryl?
Well, I, too, have been out in buildings and did the group work with the committees. And it was very interesting. And I'm so glad that I was able to be there in person because it gives you a different perspective when you hear them in person than when you read it in paper. And I would like to use my time to thank you, Stan, for your service to this board over the last two years. With COVID coming and going and everything else, it has not been an easy time, and you've handled it quite well. So thank you. And I'd like to thank all of you for having confidence in me to elect me your next president. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl, and you'll do great. Hazel?
You ready?
Yes.
I went to Pleasant Valley Elementary School to Danielle Lumen's first grade class. They sponsored a Santa workshop, and I was invited to wrap presents. They earned $115 for the Humane Society, which they presented a check to the Humane Society, which was so sweet. I went to Irving School end of the year student awards ceremony where the Battle of the Books team was announced at that meeting. And they're competing now. On Martin Luther King Day, and Diane is too humble to mention this, we went to Humanity, Habitat for Humanity. They hosted a community work day at Century Two. And it was so nice to see Wichita Public Schools represented there, where there were numerous teachers and students. And I was, I assisted Diane. She swung the hammer, and I handed her nail. She's pretty strong. I also attended most of the listening sessions. And it was a great opportunity to hear what our community partners and various stakeholders were thinking about the selection criteria for our next superintendent. And I also met with various groups about student behaviors and their concerns. I attended the showcase of choices at Century Two. And it was wonderful to see representation from various education opportunities that we, that we offer, as well as all the friendly faces and enthusiasm. The, I, every single booth that I went to, everyone, they didn't know who I was. And they were so enthusiastic and so inviting into the booths. And then when I, they found out who I was, they were really nice. They were really welcoming. No, I'm just kidding. But, but everyone was so enthusiastic. And it was just really enlightening to see that and to see the opportunities that are, that our students have available. I attended a couple of sessions of Battle of the Books, and I was impressed with the students and their ability to memorize 65 books, titles, not just the titles, but also the authors and the points. And impressed with the setup the district has and being able to televise it and the coordination and record the competition so that everybody can watch it and the coordination between the cameras and the people running the television, the whole setup in the back. So I was very impressed with that. And I have a question. I had made a request on a presentation about esports. It's coming next. Okay, I, I just, I think that's a great opportunity. Okay. But yours is next, for sure. Okay. I'm not, yeah, that's it. All right. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, new business.
Kathy?
Yes, thank you. I met a gentleman in December. And he offered an opportunity for our district to do a service project. And I'm not quite sure how to go about this. It's, it's for hunger. It's Student Hunger Challenge. And he brings everything into the school. He just needs people to bag up the food. If you've ever done this before, it's, you've got a bag, and you do rice, and you do beans, and you just go down like, yeah. What, what's that?
Oh, he was, he was asking, I was just telling him that was the thing that we do at EES.
Okay.
We have a day that we utilize.
Okay, could this, could this be, well, this, I don't know if it's the same company. It's called Heaven Sent Ministries. And it's food to go over to Ukraine. And I don't know if this could be a district-wide event and make it like a competition with schools? Or if this could be just high schools? Or if this is going to be, but he needs a million of these boxes done. And I've got all the details done. He just needs bodies. What was that?
No, I just say.
I just want to figure out how we could help.
Yes. I mean, this is an initiative that I get excited about because it's our kids, there's so much mental illness that we've talked about tonight. To get out of yourself and know that you're helping somebody who's got it far less than you do, sometimes it does turn your thinking around. And I just thought that this would be great. Wheatland in Andover packed 20,000 meals. And Towanda Middle School packed 33,000 meals. And they need a million meals. And I thought, well, if the district gets involved in it as a whole, not on the same day, mind you, but, you know, over a period of a couple of months, wouldn't take anything but bodies. If the schools just put the tables up, this organization will bring in everything, and it doesn't cost anything, nothing. Doesn't cost the district a dime. But it would be something that the district could collectively do together as a whole, even administration.
Yes, I, any initiative like that, I, what I would recommend is that you turn that initiative over to the superintendent's office. And all initiatives like that kind of get vetted, and we'll look over the, all the details of it.
Thank you.
Any other new business? If not, Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, executive session.
Recognize Julie.
I move the board recess into an executive session to discuss preparation for upcoming negotiations between the BoE and the United Teachers of Wichita pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 10:30.
Second. Motion to move into executive session by Julie, seconded by Stan. Motion carries seven zero. We will be back at 10:30. The Wichita Board of Education is turning from executive session. No action taken, no action needed at the table at this time. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
I second, thank you.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Cheryl. Motion carries six zero. Thank you.